Uh, good evening everyone. Welcome to tonight's special meeting uh that we're discussing the budget tonight is C I P. Um, and I'll turn this over for roll call to our town manager Ellen Zoffresser.
Deputy Mayor Ciccola.
Here.
Mayor Crisati.
Here.
Councillor Despard.
Here.
Councillor Finger.
Here.
Councillor Hopkins. Councillor Ludwig.
Here.
Councillor Mangini. Councillor Nelson.
Here.
Councillor Pisner.
Here.
Councillor Santinella is absent. Councillor Ungire.
Here.
Okay, we have nine present. There is a quorum.
Very good. Uh, also in attendance, uh Finance Director John John Wilcox.
John Wil.
Building Board Deputy Director of Public Works.
Donald Nims, Director of Public Works.
Okay, thank you. We'll turn it over to Town Manager.
Okay, so just as a point of information for everything that's in front of you, we received uh information today as well as we've been working on some budget items in preparation for tonight. So in order for everyone to be working off of the same page, we generated all of the copies that Council Ludwig just handed out to you. So here is the large version of the C I P, which is easier to read and has everything in the same place.
Thank you.
What you also have here is the hard copy of the email that Councillor Pisner sent earlier today with the Republican Caucus budget recommendations. My response is attached to the rear. And then the third one is this packet that has John Wilcox's analysis as the first page. Uh, this is important because it will tell you where we are in terms of total expenditure and where the increases and decreases are all in one page. If you flip that page, uh you then see the water pollution control. You flip that page, you see a breakdown of that detail that links back to the front page of what those uh sums include. Uh, we've been asked to look at uh project accounts. So the Director of Public Works did a very cursory prelook at some of those accounts. You see that on the second to the last page uh with those project codes. Some of them still need to be clarified, but that gives you an idea of what we might be able to sweep from the C I P category of projects that are about ready to close. And then the last page I just wanna spend a couple minutes on is the original comparison that Steve Belinda and I came up with earlier today. What I did was over the last three months, I have saved in terms of showing the source, I have saved all of the budget clippings in this folder from the J I over the last three months from every town that they cover. What I did today is take all of that information and put it in a regional comparison. So you will see the towns covered, which are most of our neighboring towns as well as some that have similar budgets. The budget town side, the budget board of ed side, the mill rate, the mill rate increase, the town percentage increase for the budget, the board of ed increase, and then any comments that I thought would be helpful as it relates to what these other towns did in terms of their budgets. The one thing that I want to stress as we go into this conversation is that inflation is real. Increases across the line in all of the towns that are surrounding Enfield is real. And I don't think even after having a robust conversation tonight, is it realistic to think that Enfield is going to get to a zero tax increase? And let me tell you why. Because last year you took four million dollars out of fund balance and that went to operations. Typically, fund balance is used for capital and one-time expenses. So right now, as you go to start planning your budget for July first, you have to find four million dollars just to make up for what you did last year plus the three and change million dollars that you need to address the proposed increases. It's not a great position to be in. So I wanted to just level set that, but also show you, you're not alone. Every other community is struggling with these inflation costs and other types of increases while trying to retain and recruit staff and provide robust municipal services, which has always been the hallmark here in Enfield. So if in fact, we go down that road of looking to to cut over seven million dollars, which is a couple of mills, right? Um, it's gonna take a lot of time and effort and it's going to cut into the provision of municipal services. Cuts here and there are not going to do it. You have to really take a very holistic look at what Enfield does for the taxpayers and how you provide those services. And I'm going to use one example. So let's close Pearl Street Library, right? It's a standalone. They can get services elsewhere. That only saves you a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So in the scope of things, it doesn't even make a difference. Um, one town, I don't know which one it was, decided to remove leaf pickup. Big service that the community likes. That was only a four hundred thousand dollar cut in that community. I don't know if it would be the same or close to that here, but let's talk about programmatic issues. Is anybody here willing to raise the P word for privatization? I mean, there is issues there and there's money to be found, but then there's also other costs. So I'm looking forward to the conversation because I think that there's a lot that's happening here and there's a lot that we have to really be concerned about. That being said, um, we have some good news for you. The good news is that John Wilcox and Steve Belinda in conversation with our insurance carrier and our consultant, we believe that based on claims data, we can reduce the budget by a little over six hundred thousand dollars by taking our insurance increase for this budget year to zero. Those numbers are roughly four hundred and sixty eight thousand two hundred and four dollars on the town side. And the what we've negotiated with uh the superintendent this morning is that he would give back two hundred and fifty thousand on the board of education side. So right there, it's about a little over seven hundred thousand if I'm looking at my numbers correctly. Um, I mean, I think that that's a good starting point. So that's something. Um, the other things that we've looked at, you know, there's uh some discussion about the actual final number of the Board of Assessment Appeal activity because they just filed filed the report. Did were you able to find anything on that?
Uh, they do not have all of the information yet, so they she should have some information for me tomorrow.
Okay, so do you wanna explain to them why there could be some wiggle room there as well?
Um, sure. I the what I have to originally do with these things, I have to make an estimate of like we know what the grant list is. But I also have to make an estimate of what the Board of Assessment Appeals will do as far as adjustments for it. Uh, last couple of years I've had to uh estimate fairly high number of of reductions. Um, and last year it came in pretty or for twenty three, it came in pretty accurately. Um, I'm not sure what the actual numbers, what was uh requested from the board this year and what um what reductions were granted. So I mean, if that number, actual number come in at half of what I estimated, um, then I could reduce that number and that would also reduce the mill rate.
So we're gonna do a T B A on that. One thing that we're really looking to avoid is something that a lot of towns did over the last several years. And I believe it happened to a smaller degree here as well. And that is keeping your medical insurance rates level. But meanwhile, your trajectory is moving upwards. Then when you do end up having a rate increase, you're looking to fill in that gap. When you have to do that and move money around to that degree, what you're doing is simply putting a Band-Aid on the situation and it restricts your ability to actually do policy oriented project spending because you're over here kinda plugging the dyke. So we don't really wanna play with any of those money because I think it paralyzes the town council in terms of what your options are moving forward. So that's kind of where we are as a opening. Um, I don't know. We spent a lot of time this afternoon kind of talking about these things. I don't know, John, did you wanna say anything before we open it up or anything that you'd like to offer for the good of the body?
Um, well, like I said, I went through, um, you know, i- it seems like a very large number. And it is eleven million dollars is a big increase. But those numbers are driven by um costs that are kind of fixed. I mean, we had investment losses in the pension plan that now our actuaries say we we have to account for those and and make a we we did some light of things to reduce the impact of that, but um it's still a fairly large number that we have to make up. Um, the rest of the benefits, this number that shows up Medicaid, medical, social security, Medicare, that number will decrease by about four hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars on on the on this side. Um, another two hundred and fifty thousand out of the board of ed expenses. Um, you know, some of these nu- items are fairly small. Uh, the purchased professional and technical didn't increase by thirty four thousand dollars. Purchased property services, um, I there is in the detail that the third handout I think that you had, um, which was this one. You go to the section labeled purchase professional technical or purchased property services. The increase in this one was driven by increase in disposal costs. Okay, so the landfill costs and stuff that we were talking about uh last week with D P W, that's where this number gets. Um, other costs were fire protection charges. This is the um, this is the water charge that that um Connecticut Water, Hazardville Water bill us. You know, that's another ninety thousand dollars on that. So as you can see, other purchase services, uh, you know, people decreased where they could. Uh, that went down by sixty eight thousand dollars. Supplies and materials is kind of a misnomer in that this is all the accounts, the object codes that start with five six because it includes electricity, natural gas, um, other utilities. Uh, and as you look at the detail here, um, those, the um connect natural gas, electricity, the the utility costs increased by a hundred and seventy eight thousand of that number. Uh, across all funds, it increased by two hundred and nine thousand dollars. So what you're seeing on here is the general fund piece of it. Um, the but it also impacts other funds as well. And so, um, the impact to those is not against it is shown in the in the transfer to other um, the transfer to other fund lines down here at the bottom. Uh, so then the other, you know, fund debt service increased. Um, this is now we're we're paying for the high school project, we're paying for the the uh Rhodes two thousand fifteen project. Uh, things that, you know, we we've invested in the future of the town that was were approved by by the taxpayers and that's where these numbers come in. Those are offset by slightly reduced leasing costs. Uh, and then the last piece, like I said, is a transfer. The some of these funds, we like social services, they have major sources of revenue that affect their operations, okay? That's why we account for those in separate funds. So E M S has, it's had, it can bill it for its client services. What we pay is the difference that um that their their funding sources can't pay. That's what the uh, that's what the town covers. Um, we were able to increase the E M S revenues this year. Uh, that resulted in a net decrease to the town of ninety seven thousand. Then the last item in here, well, uh, board of ed, obviously they had what they submitted, which was their um two point nine million. Then we had the that number will go down by the medical amount. And then the biggest one is the transfer to capital. Uh, and this is, you know, basically, we we spent as much last year, but we spent last year when we we did a lot through ARPA. So it gave the taxpayers a break for a year anyway on it. But we we can go through tonight all of the individual capital items and we can put that up next and show you what we're buying with our with our money.
So from the administration side, we are recommending an allocation of five million dollars for your C I P needs. So keep that in your head as we go through the list. The other thing I'd like to just bring up from a housekeeping standpoint is that if there could be consensus on items tonight on the C I P list, that it would be helpful for us to get a kind of a okay from you to move ahead and start preparing those motions because if you remember, our meeting is Monday, the agenda has to be published on Friday. If we need to do a series of motions of budget reductions and changes, John has to work on all that and have it be part of the agenda packet. So anything we could be doing between now and Friday when that agenda gets published is gonna make it much easier for us to manage that process and also to ensure that we don't have any mistakes. Um, anything that isn't done will have to be done from the floor and I think some people would question that from a transparency and accountability standpoint if it wasn't part of the budget package. So if there's things that everybody agrees on tonight, we can pencil those in as potential budget motions and move forward that way. Okay, Mayor, I don't know how you'd like to proceed if you wanna provide some direction as to what you'd like to see next or talk about next?
Well, I would like to see us go through the the C I P budgets right now.
Would you be using this list?
Well, sixteen is fine.
And everybody has it, so.
And it turned away and then it took me ten minutes to find and focus.
Can I ask a question? So can so from the budget that you s- I guess provided, there's been some changes from that already. Do we see that as our new starting point?
Oh, um.
So you know how there's already been reductions and things already taken out from.
Yep. Well, we haven't actually made any 'cause 'cause you guys.
Or suggestions from internal.
Right, those would have to be approved by by you. Actually, I think I have this open.
I guess if we can start, if it's all right, my suggestion would be if we could start by what you're already proposing to take out, right, internally through all of the departments and then see where we're at.
Well, we haven't agreed on um on what, I mean, some people have made some suggestions, but we haven't really reviewed those as of yet.
Right, I'm not talking just C I P, I'm talking in general.
Right.
Are we only gonna do is deal with C I P? Because I think for me, C I P, I don't know, it's it's related to how much we've already reduced on the operation side.
I mean, they are separate. If we could get through the C I P tonight, that would be helpful.
Ellen, just a quick question. On your regional comparisons page.
Yes.
The last two, Stafford and Sum- or Subfield and Summers.
Mm-hmm.
I think those numbers are reversed. How can their board of ed budget be more than their overall budget?
It is. I checked them.
What do you mean with it?
That's that's what their budget numbers are.
Well, how can their total budget be eighteen million and the board of ed gets thirty six million?
The total budget.
Yeah, I mean. Maybe it doesn't include the B O.
I'll get the I'll get the clipping, but it, believe me, the education numbers are across the board everywhere, but I'll pull it out for you.
Right, but isn't the first row the total town budget?
Yep, that might be, I might have done that wrong, but those are the numbers.
Right, I think they're reversed, but.
They're reversed. Maybe the total budget, it might be thirty four.
Yeah, I think that is the town budget.
Yeah, I think those two numbers got switched.
Yeah, let me find the real numbers and we can all correct them on our sheets.
Oh, it's not a big deal 'cause they are really not even comparable, but. All right, we wanna start line by line with C I P?
Um, we'll see what Bob wants to do, but.
Yeah, let's let's start.
And we're gonna do make sure we have a consensus for any of them?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Okay. So we're gonna look at, let's see. It's fair enough, the sinking fund.
So.
Sophie, go on to twenty twenty four.
Right, so the the shaded column, that's for what we're proposing for this year. So any numbers that are in those lines, in that within that shaded section, that's what's included in in the uh budget. In the proposals.
Yep.
Okay, all right, first one, uh, D P W Administration Professional Engineering Services, one hundred eighty seven thousand five hundred.
That's a yes 'cause that's for the modernization referendum.
What's, yeah, what exactly is that?
No, it's it's services that we use throughout the year to augment what we're doing for projects. Donald, do you wanna speak to that, the one two seven five?
Yeah, it covers everything. Whatever pops up, we get like we had an H vac, we needed an H vac study. That's what comes out of that 'cause we can't possibly forecast or put that in the operating side 'cause otherwise now we'd be padding 'cause we don't know what we use during the year. Right now I have, I think, less than ten thousand dollars in that account right now. So we have burned through a lot of um ar- architectural engineering services this year. So that's that's what it's for.
Good.
I think that makes sense.
We we in agreement on this one?
Keep it in, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, keep it in, all right. Okay, we're good. All right, the next one, uh, for fifty thousand dollars miscellaneous school facilities.
And what's that?
What is that?
This is used for um somewhat catastrophic events, uh, case in point. Enfield High School has two um air conditioner coils that are destroyed. We have to replace them. Yes, you know, you know, it that look, there are two air conditioner coils. And the replacement cost we got is forty six thousand and forty six thousand five hundred. So this is what this is the type of account where we would use to replace those coils.
How did they get destroyed? They're brand new.
They're damaged. They're no good. Uh, we've had we've had Butch go up there, we've had Fred Gerber, our Deputy Director of Operations, go up there. We actually had two other companies go in and the best quote we had so far has been forty six thousand five hundred. They're out of warranty and they're no good.
Right, I was gonna say, why why isn't that in warranty?
Yeah.
They're out. So that's a that's a cost that we have to incur though.
So 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 wouldn't they have a warranty of a couple of years?
Yeah.
Probably, right?
Some of it's one year, some of it's.
Yeah.
And then some of it's five and but again, it's it's out of warranty, it's not covered by anything. It's a cost that we have to uh.
Right, and that's just one incident. So the reason that this line item appears the way it is and there's a matching one for building of grounds is because we can't forecast that it's coming up. So it's held out in the capital as a line item so that it can be tracked and that it's not just kind of slush funded into something else that is hard to track. If it's not used, it's easy to see and it can be put back in, but we use both of them.
I I. I understand that, but he said they were trashed and uh not faulty. And most A C equipment comes with ten year parts replacement, one to five year on labor. And again, like Church Street, here we're spending another fifty thousand dollars on a building we just spent a hundred million dollars on. I I mean, what happened to them? Did they get trashed? And if so, how did they get trashed? Because if we're.
It's not, it I I may have misspoken, Councillor. It's not vandalism. They I, right now, we're we're the forecast, we are subjecting that it happened on that twenty below degree day. Um, that one random day we had, we have no other way of knowing uh what else happened to it. It was not vandalized, it was not damaged by humans. It was, we turn it on and it it is leaking, both coils are leaking everywhere.
Was it not taken care of or maintained? Would it be into warranty then?
No, we've already established it's not under warranty. All right, keep it.
So.
All right, so.
The there's a question about.
But that is the, there's a reason for this account.
Preventative maintenance.
There's a question about preventative maintenance. What happens to those over the course of their installation to a catastrophic event like this? How often are they checked?
Well, we go through them out every year. We winterize, we do whatever we have to do for them. It's part of our routine thing that we do with Butch.
So then the winterization wasn't done properly because they froze.
I cannot count like, Councillor, I don't I don't know if it, I could only tell you that it was winterized. And again, it may may not have survived a minus twenty degree day. I don't know. But all I know is that it's that both coils are need to be replaced right now.
That's not an acceptable answer. I'm sorry, Bob. I know we gotta fix them, but that's not acceptable.
Well, what are you gonna do? They don't work, right?
I that's what I said, we gotta fix them, but we got a serious problem here if we're not taking care of brand new equipment.
That's not what he said. He didn't say that we didn't.
He said they froze and intended.
Yeah, but that might not be, that's not necessarily human error, can't, can't, I just, that might not be human error. It might be just what he said. They're faulty. They fail. I don't like it, but saying that that's a person problem is different.
Okay, all right, let's let's replace everything every five years. Let's let's move move onward. We good to keep this in?
Yeah.
Okay, move forward. School H vac inspection every five years, four hundred and fifty thousand.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yes, we we we're pretty good with that.
I believe that's a mandate, right, Donald?
That's a mandate.
Brand it's a brand new unfunded mandate that takes effect January first, two thousand twenty four. But we have to go through every single school that's applicable to test every all the H vac systems, steam traps, everything else has to get inspected per the uh unfunded state mandate. And it's done every five years. This is the first year it's effective.
All right, thank you. Uh, next Eli Whitney Roof, uh, seventy five thousand dollars.
Yep, so there's a shortage on this, John. Do you wanna explain what we're trying to accomplish with the budget?
Uh, well, this is to um fund the the remaining change orders that um were submitted late from the uh from our our owners rep. So I think Donald can take talk to him actually a little bit more than that.
Uh, is Fred here? Not Fred.
Fred's not here, no. We've we've had the Joint Cities Committee has had, again, we all agreed on change orders. This is the balance that is due to the contractor uh one year out, which is gonna be next probably in, I think, I next October or something, November. But this has to get funded because that was an agreed upon change order.
This has nothing to do with what they submitted late and we're still dealing with, right?
The reimbursement that we are dealing with.
That's the reimbursement issue.
The reimbursement is a whole separate issue which we have no update on right now from um from other people.
Yeah.
So so so, so you're saying we have no money in the sinking fund to use it for this? That was the point of having an ongoing sinking fund is the.
No, I didn't say that.
Which. So you're all right, so why can't we use the sinking fund money instead of funding seventy five grand? Especially if especially if there's there's modernization thing that's going on. I don't see why we need to put it in our capital improvement budget. We could, we could. That was the whole point of doing a roof the way we did it.
Just let him answer, just let him answer, let him answer.
Uh, there's there's no reason we couldn't use that as sinking fund for that. Um, I thought that, you know, I would generally think I would re- re- use that for larger items than this, but that's fine.
How much is in that sinking fund?
Um, the board of ed sinking fund. The I believe it has about three hundred thousand. I just wanna make sure I'm.
Sorry, I recommend we pull it out. I'm not in favor of keeping it, but if I'm in the minority, then so be it.
No, I agree.
Let's just see what's in the sinking fund so we know and we.
I'm pretty sure it was three hundred thousand. What was the figure? Who gave us that the V O E and town council meeting as well?
We have two hundred and four thousand in there.
Two oh four?
Or two twenty four?
Two oh four seven oh tail.
I think we use um some of this for.
If I may interject. So the next item, the next item that you're gonna be reviewing is sixty thousand dollar for Hazardville Memorial Roof. That is the same course, same same trajectory as um as with.
As change orders, yeah.
So same, it's all for change order of paying retainage. So just understand that the next item is sixty thousand dollars plus the seventy five are all basically the same trajectory.
Yeah, and for people's just confirmation, this was all dealt with in joint facilities and approved and change orders unfortunately happen all the time.
No worries. All right, but that's what it's the sinking fund for. I'm I'm for pulling both out. Thanks, Donald.
It's asked what percentage of funds is for, I don't know if they're with that.
We, yeah, counselor.
Thank you, I'm I'm just confused, why are we taking it out? We've already started the work on these roofs?
They're done.
No, they're.
They're done, okay.
So they're done, these are change orders, so let's say flashing went and they had to replace it, and that wasn't the original bid, or something like that, they had to.
Yeah.
Fix something around a window, and they had to replace the window, and that wasn't originally was gonna happen, it, I think those may have actually been two examples that we talked about. Those are change orders that we had to fund in this project, so those had to be done in order to deal with the roof replacement.
So why are we taking the money out?
They.
We have another fund.
Cause they haven't been paid yet.
We need the money to pay those change orders that went through.
Okay.
Mike is suggesting taking it from sinking fund instead of CIP.
That's the point of the sinking fund.
Right.
That was the point, we're supposed to be re- going back to the state, which my understanding, I don't know if we've done that consistently. Where we've actually supposed to get reimbursed for the the work on the three roofs. That was part of the process that we were, we also submitting to get some of that money back.
Are we gonna get stuck with.
I'm sorry, I.
Ultimately, though?
No, well, we have to pay for it, but we have a fund set up to take care of it, I'm saying, we don't need to put in the CIP.
Alright, alright, I got that.
Yeah, that's fine, that's all my suggestion.
Now, can can John or Donald, can you guys, can either of you think of a good idea why we wouldn't take it, why why this wouldn't be a good idea to take the seventy five and the sixty? Uh out of the two oh four? Like is, other than just savings?
No.
I I don't have any opinion on that. Okay. John, you're saying you're fine with it?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I I.
I don't have any issue with that.
Does anybody have any issues with taking out the seventy five and the sixty thousand, so that would be a total of a hundred thirty five thousand?
One thirty five?
Yeah, everybody in agreement with that? Okay, hold that.
If I could, I just wanna clarify, this money was already paid to the contractor, it came out of the.
Yes, yeah, this, these are bills we owe, yeah.
Right, right. Right, right, right.
Okay, we good?
I'm good. Well, it's not for tight, could we get a report some point, if we've actually resubmitted to the state?
You don't want that, I don't.
I know, sorry, not tonight.
He said. No, yeah.
I said it was. I know, that's that's, but that was the whole point of doing it this way. So I'm done, no, I'm done, no worries, I'm done, so.
Yep.
Alright, we're good with that.
Yep, I'm done, thank you.
Alright, next item, uh miscellaneous town facilities, uh fifty thousand dollars. Uh.
This is actually for last.
No, yeah, Bob, you're on the, go on the back page, it's double sided.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was just the sixty dollars.
I did, it was just the sixty dollars.
Oh, you're right, I I I'm apologizing.
Just one.
Yeah.
So the miscellaneous town, it's the same as what we discussed for the board of ed, it's incidentals and things that pop up, so that they can be tracked here.
Okay, so this. Are we okay with this, keeping this in? Just like on our side.
So Donald, sorry, just give us an idea what this would be used for?
Anything, um our, the air conditioner town hall goes.
Maybe we got other projects that we're we're putting in here for the town hall and other things, so just curious.
Other projects or uh this?
Not to say, but that's what I'm saying, give me an example of what this would be used for. Something we've used it recently for.
Wait.
Yeah, what happened with the elevator or the bathrooms?
May may maybe the renovation of.
Yeah, it's on that, yeah.
Down, yeah, on the first floor. You know, with the uh in the finance department, is that?
Oh yeah, just whatever, yeah.
Just one.
That was, that came out of a different, this is ca- this is catastrophic events that we cannot possibly forecast, but that's.
Was this the elevator, I think it's used succession?
Or the bathrooms that didn't work last week?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, and again, like if the air conditioner here at town hall breaks down.
Yep, thank you.
This is what we would use it for.
We're gonna keep this one in?
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, the next one is the boiler water treatment. Where is this, Donald?
This is throughout town, through all the, all schools and municipal facilities, we try, we have installed. Um water treatment features to help prolong the life of the boilers that we have uh in town, and we use chemicals that are automatically injected on some of them. Some are done every month, some are done on a daily drip like an IV, just to try to help it extend the life of the of the boilers that we have in town. And this is a yearly.
I think I think it should, yeah.
Yeah, two centering all the boilers.
Just to, Don- Donald clarify, so curious, what what line item was this in prior, since it's new, looks like it's new to this budget, just curious, what, how did we do this prior?
This was in uh six fourteen uh B and G, it just got too big.
Okay, so it was actually in a B and G line item?
Yes.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, next, uh ball field upgrades, maintenance repair on all fields, so this is just, okay, Donald, this is B and G.
Yeah, this is non-specific stuff, buying more soccer nets, buying whatever, doing, replacing fencing, place anything at ball diamonds, uh at, you know.
All fields.
For all fields, this is not specific to any one, this is townwide.
Okay, you you good with this one?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, next the Wallop School Basketball Court, the two hundred thousand, yeah.
I have a question. I mean, I thought this was in our budget for last year.
What? Wallop School Basketball.
Wallop School of Basketball Courts.
We discussed Wallop Street last year because uh the neighbors had brought to us safety concerns, and once it was reviewed and checked by um our staff.
Yeah.
The liability and risk to the town was very apparent, so as an in-house project, the public works department removed the failing basketball court, so that there could not be a hazard or trip or a fall. Um to repair or replace in a higher quality than what was there, has to be budgeted, so you have to identify a funding source in order to replace it, cause it was not something we had planned for.
I was also curious why the hoops were removed, I thought we were gonna fix it and.
Saying we can't.
Wow.
Because we cannibalize all of our parts to put them someplace else, so they were needed someplace else, if this were to be replaced, all of that would be new.
Yeah. It'd be a brand new, brand new basketball facility and court, you know, so. You're gonna get new bowls, new baskets, you know, new basketballs, everything.
So I propose we take it out of ARPA funds, I don't, uh counselor counselor Ludwig explained that you guys did three courts, there were seventy five thousand apiece. So why is this one court two hundred thousand? And regardless whether it's seventy five or two hundred, I say we take it out of ARPA funds, we start the project immediately, because it should have never been removed. And if we get consensus tonight to do that, then we can remove this two hundred thousand from CIP right now.
Alright, I'll let Donald answer about the seventy five, but I will just say that we are self insured, so the minute we are noticed about a risk or a liability, we act, because the. Thought of a lawsuit or someone being seriously injured on something that we had been noticed on and received, is a violation of just about every insurance department.
I I understand it totally, but I believe me and Bob were led to believe it was closed, and then this spring it would get paid.
Right.
And that's not what happened, they pulled the courts out and somebody told the neighbors, it's gone. Well, it's not gone, and I wanna move forward immediately, so they don't lose the whole summer without the court.
No, I guess.
Sure, I mean.
So.
And I agree with counselor Nelson, we should work on this immediately.
Well, be being on the leisure committee, and I know that you're on that also, Gina, you're on it now. Uh but when this issue came up with the heavy duty cracks that were in there, somebody was gonna get hurt bad, so it was eliminated. With the idea that it was going to be replaced. My thought was it was gonna be replaced this springtime. Alright, so I would like to see this uh be moved forward, do I think it's two hundred thousand dollars, Donald, I I.
This is the sim, this is a concrete court, post tension concrete that is being installed currently at the infield high school, that has a twenty plus year warranty. It'll never, it'll, it is warranted not to crack for twenty years, and not to be, not to be replaced in any way, shape or form.
And Wallop School?
Yes.
Okay. Good, that's fine.
That is a difference in.
So it's.
Two hundred thousand dollars versus a seventy five to a hundred thousand dollar blacktop.
So that the that court obviously is gonna be totally different than the three that were put up over at Alcorn here and.
If you just pull in, those kids are playing all day long, so I mean, the court, as long as it's, I mean.
Well, that's what, well, to me it's worth it.
Can we take that out of?
Well, I'm just, so I wanna be clear, two hundred, so again, we're talking about warranties here, we better have a warranty if we're gonna spend a ton of grand on a, it's not supposed to crack. Cause um, I mean, maybe we're already seeing, uh some of the brand new roads are already cracking.
We've, we spent eight hundred fifty thousand dollars at the high school for six courts, so with that same cor- same company, same state contract, same warranty.
What's the warranty, how many years, I'm sorry?
Twenty years.
Twenty years, so meaning crack, there's a crack on that court, they're fixing it, not just filling it, not just filling it, where the grass grows, they're fixing it.
No. It is guaranteed not to crack for twenty years, because it's post tension, so what they do is they put rebar all through the middle of it, the concrete sets, they come. X amount of days later, put the machines on, stretch everything.
So by chance for cracks, that's what I'm saying, I I appreciate that with it, but it's just not filling in with blacktop that doesn't, you know, like we do on every other court, and unfortunately it gets worse.
It is. No, these are not, again, no, this is a a full warranty for twenty years.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
And I appreciate your support of that, because we really have to do better with how we roll out product, and this is an example of doing it the right way.
So.
Which will save you money down the road.
And and I totally agree, and this is another thing that we had talked about was uh doing periodic or yearly safety inspections on all of our grounds or or all of our. Playgrounds, I don't care where 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 we are, we need to have a plan in place so that we're not in a situation, you know. Here we are twenty five years down the road, and nothing's ever been done to a playground area, and then we're stuck with it, just like we are right here now. So if we have proper maintenance on on a lot of this, I think it would be best for everybody in the long run. I'm gonna, counselor me and Gina, and then Donald.
Okay, to uh councilman Nelson's point, would it be possible to use the funds from ARPA and not CIP? Is that something that we can do, that we can pull it out?
Get it done.
I think that was a a great suggestion.
Well, plus it also gets the project rolling, right?
Exactly, exactly.
Tomorrow.
There is money, there is money in ARPA.
Tomorrow.
So we have three hundred and six thousand in ARPA, generally speaking, it goes through general government, but I think you probably have consensus, I mean, I'm.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
Right, so I think you, so next Monday with the budget meeting, then the regular, you want that on the regular council meeting?
Yep.
Yeah, pull it out of here.
Being so be on a regular council, yeah.
Yeah, so it'll be, but is everybody good with that?
Yes, yep.
I, yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so we're gonna.
Remove.
Take out the.
To remove.
And move. And the bas- basketball court will be ARPA.
Just just.
Just the one, I mean, I I'm not sure that, I mean, we can, we can't appropriate the money out of ARPA on Monday night, that's not the problem. Problem will be going to the vendor and finding out if they have on their schedule.
Time.
The time this spring or summer to get it done.
I understand.
We could try that, but there's no guarantee on that.
We make a phone call, we make a phone call to tomorrow.
Right.
And see what their availability is, cause if we wait a month or two months for the budget, we're still making the phone call.
So.
Well, the other thing is that, that, you know, we can notify the residents of plan of plan of action, and it'll bring down the temperature.
Absolutely.
Right.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Great, now.
Yep.
Tom, I interrupted.
Through you, Mayor, Donald, this isn't the same people we were trying to nail down to commit to the pickleball repairs, is it?
No.
Okay, so.
So so curious, can we, I know it's a different court, but can't the same vendor did the other three courts, they did them quick and there on time? I know Donald.
That was the cheaper ones, though, right?
Right, is it, but is it a different vendor, can I do the more expensive, what you, same vendor do the more expensive court? They did, they were quick, and they did a very, very good job, in my opinion. I don't know, I know, I know we did, they, you know, they did work.
Courts I like.
I'm sorry, I forgot the name of the company, yeah, yeah.
All traded, all renovated.
He it doesn't, oh, I I like that, but they can make a phone call tomorrow, find out availability, either way.
Yeah.
Well, I think that then you should probably, as a council, think about attaching a bid waiver to whatever we.
Right.
Find as someone who's willing to do it, cause otherwise that is gonna get mired in another process that is gonna add to it.
Fair.
Yeah.
So if we can find someone to commit to do the work in the timeline that you've outlined, I would respectfully request a bid waiver, accompany that resolution.
Yeah, it's fair, I think, I agree, that's fair.
And and i- as long as you can just come to us Monday, Ellen, with that you've reached out to certain vendors and.
Yep.
And they can get the project going.
We're we're. We're required to do that anyway, so.
The walls were.
Yep, beautiful, appreciate it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Great. Everybody's good with that?
Okay.
Yeah, okay, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, next the Alcorn gym floor replacement, a hundred twenty thousand dollars.
Isn't that a newer floor?
Well, I don't know how old Alcorn is, that's how old the floor is, so.
No, that one ain't even there.
No, the gym's there.
Where, Alcorn?
Isn't the back addition?
This is inside, counselor. The.
The inside floor.
Okay.
The inside court, right, and when we, when the consolidation, when we moved social services and youth services there, we had portions of that floor redone. Due to the, there was a leak in the roof, and it came through, and there's some buckling and something like that, we fixed that at that point. There's been a new source of moisture that is coming through and has buckled the court, I mean, basically the entirety of the court needs replacement.
Have we isolated the source of the leak?
It's under, it's underground, it's coming through underground.
Right, but how do we stop it from buckling the new floor?
We've, we've been, we've engaged a contractor that does this, and there's ways to seal that off that will, that'll prevent this.
Was this, was this on our CIP list for last year? What floor was?
I can hear.
What floor was on our CIP list for last year that we didn't, oh, it was annex, right, that was the one that we didn't fund last year or something, right?
Annex.
Annex.
Annex, the annex? That's correct.
Okay. We deferred it.
Correct.
Alright, and if, and for actually, for the, for going on, can you just let me know if we, if this was on the list for the year prior, and we didn't do it, just for my.
So can we defer this one?
I think we should.
It should be.
It should be right here, just.
It should be, right, yeah, just saying.
So we're not kicking the can down the road?
Right.
Uh yeah, I'm not interested in that.
Yep.
My side.
I'm just very defer it after, till we find out.
Uh, are we, I think this, to defer this or remove this?
Yeah.
I'm okay with remove it.
Can we, can we put it on the chopping block right now, because, so this is what I'm saying, I'm okay doing this right now and going through the CIP list this way, that being said. If they come back with all of these cuts on the other side, on the operational side, I would like to come back and look at this, so I am willing to have a yes, no, and maybe pile.
We can, we look at this. Absolutely. Yep.
You know what I mean, so yes, let's kinda put this on the chopping block, yeah.
We're gonna remove it now, but then we'll go back if Ellen pulls five million dollars out of her Biggie bank.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna comment that this gym is used by the youth center.
Yeah, it is.
It's used by Board of Education for the, what is that program that's there, ETLA?
Yeah.
Is that the one that's there?
ETLA, yeah.
And it's a store, it's rented, so right now, it's not in great shape that, I mean, I I did see kids playing basketball in there as part of the youth center activity the other day when I was in the building, but. We're not gonna be able to rent it, not that every rental results in revenue, it ought to be clear, but you're you're in essence gonna take a gym offline. Because we can't, in good faith, now that we've been noticed about the damage, we can't rent it.
Well, that that gym has been offline for storage for a number of years, and we finally now got it cleaned cleaned out, and it's being used.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe we.
We could go back and take a look at it.
So, but my point is.
Right, but what she's saying is it, we're now been noticed, we can't, we can't use it.
Right. We've got HP Store Schools got a brand new gym in it, that's broken up into little classrooms.
But that's not where that program is, no.
Because that school is overcrowded for revenue producing programs.
Right.
Yeah.
So, and we had LeMagne Gym previously when the Alcorn Gym was offline, we no longer have the LeMagne Gym either.
Okay, so right now, we will remove, maybe to come back.
It's gone.
Yep.
Is it in the maybe pile or is it removed?
I like this as a maybe pile.
It's removed.
I like it in the maybe pile, it's fine.
I'm not a maybe person, see, yes or no, and then we have to go down.
Right.
Yes.
But Gina, I, along with what she's saying, I, we can revisit the whole.
Yes.
Any, anytime.
Cause that's why I'm highlighting, we'll end up with the highlighted ones, we revisit them when Ellen finds us ten million dollars.
Right.
Alright, and.
Well, it's fine.
Alright, next one here on the annex pool diving block replacement.
Yes.
Uh twenty thousand, I think.
Yeah, we're good.
Due to the fact of uh, the the high schools using it in competitions.
The same thing.
Yep.
And Dolphins use it too, right?
Yeah, they do, yeah.
We need that, we're, I won't care about that.
Okay.
We're good, yeah.
Yep.
Alright, the next one, uh the annex gym floor repair and fit uh and finish.
This is what we didn't do last year.
We deferred, yeah, we can't defer this one again.
I think.
I'm al- well, I'm okay with it.
I think we can defer.
I'm not, well, due to the the amount of people that are in there with pickleball, uh th- those courts need to be, to be done.
I have um.
Yeah, that's true.
There is a significant amount of recreation budget revenue that is generated out of the use of the gym.
Especially.
Uh basketball travel down to all of those um other grades, plus the pickleball that Allison charges for. It was probably, I can pull it up, um she just sent me an email, cause I asked her that question, it's thousands of dollars.
Yeah, so.
And that's because you just told.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Just wanna, you know, and pickleball, it's it's the biggest, fastest growing sport in America, and if we're gonna take a look at the the outdoor ones later on, I I think it's important to fuck this.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna kick it twice.
Is the, is the floor in that fat a shape, like?
Yes.
Yeah, and it's very, it's very much.
It needs, it needs to be redone and refinished, plus all the uh uh the lines on the court, they have to be redone for basketball, for pickleball, for volleyball. You name it, it has to be redone.
So, so it's not a re- it's not a replacement, like outdoor, it's just kinda like a refinish and a.
No, I'm, I'm.
Just gonna, just finish.
Right, sand them down, yeah, line, problem, yeah, so.
Sand them down, put it back up.
It's a forty two thousand dollars.
No.
I'm sorry, what?
This is, this is.
Hang on.
Well needed.
Forty two, almost, it's forty two nine, forty three thousand dollars.
Uh the.
The bleachers were removed too, so that areas, we sanded down.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and bleachers were removed, so right, right, like the pickleball, like right now, I wanna increase the court levels to six, which could be, uh, you know, it's doable. And I have to tell you, I witness it every day, they're in there four days a week, and it's bad.
Yep.
Yeah, she said it's about forty three grand.
Okay, I'm I'm good with the annex gym floor, because we saved two hundred thousand for Wallop School Park.
I think.
Because we're doing that with ARPA funds, if you guys are okay with it.
Sorry, right, oh, I'm sorry, I think, yep.
Donald.
Well, just, just wanna echo counsel, just parts. Well, just, just wanna, I can't, just parts, common about pickleball, by taking out the bleachers that are, that are not to code and just they're just not good condition, we're able to get two more courts inside there, right now, the four pickleball courts are have, are taped down um as, as as are, as the lines, they're not, because again, that court, it was, it's, it hasn't been done in forty, fifty years, so those lines that are specific to basketball, all the new stuff we put on top was just by tape, so now we'll be able to actually line it accordingly, underneath the wax, underneath the, all the stuff that has to be done and add done correctly, again, we also have four portable bleachers there now to adjust, so whatever's going on, we can pick up, we can put the bleachers on wheels, wheel them out if we have to put up for basketball, two on each side, we have all that room to move around with those portable bleachers. I just wanted to add that thing to here.
So, just for the council's edification, Allison Albergini pulls in over forty three thousand dollars annually from use of the gym only. That equates to over thirty three hundred people using the gym. The other thing that I want to just remind you of is that we are in a pool crisis, because we cannot find adequate lifeguards, which means that if we have to limit the time that the five hundred and sixty kids who register for Ton of Fun Summer Camp can be in the pool, they have to be someplace else and that's gonna be the gym.
Yeah.
So the gym has to be functioning, it has to be safe.
It's good, it's good.
Yeah.
All right.
Everybody's good with that?
All right, thank you, all right, next, uh restroom renovations at the library, a hundred fifty thousand. Uh, are we?
Well, I've been in there, I've been in there, they're not gray, they're not gray.
They're usable.
They're usable.
They're equipped.
They're usable.
I'm a no, I'm a no.
I'm a no on it, they're usable.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's easy, all right, next, the uh DPW fuel tank replacement, uh multi-phase, Don- Donald, could you uh explain?
So I believe this will be the final round of uh funding for this, uh we have ninety percent drawings and specifications for this, for you guys that don't know,
Yeah.
one of the tanks needs to come out underground, it expires next year in November, so the plan is to put two above ground tanks, uh the two new dispens- or four new dispensers, new gate, new access road, so it's it's a pretty big, big job.
We have, we have to complete the new refueling area before we can take the older ones offline, so that's why we're getting, we're trying, we have to, we have to construct a new area first, then go back and remove all the other tanks, there are three tanks in total, one of them has to be out by next November per um per per deep and the other ones are, I think, a year after, then another two years after that, when we're gonna take them all out at the same time, just for hopefully economies of scale, um but that's why we need to do this now, so, trying to get out of it.
Is it, is this the final payment?
Yeah, it's the final audit.
Cause I remember this back when I was on the council years ago.
Yeah, this is final funding, we haven't started, yeah, again, we haven't started the project, but just the design is nearly done, we're almost ready to go.
And with the cost increases over the years that we've been funding this, we still got enough to fund the whole thing?
One fifteen plus five hundred nine.
Supporting our engineer, yes.
So I think it's a little over a million.
Okay, thank you.
So it's under seven fifty, a little over.
From one point one.
Is that that right?
Right. Yeah, we have over a million roughly here there.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right.
So the whole of that year, we can put this away for a couple of years.
Yeah.
So this, this, this will be.
Yep.
Fine, but we're good with this?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. All right, next, uh fleet oil storage, thirteen thousand.
What exactly?
There's, just to replace, uh right now, we have uh motor oil and some others oils that are stored, they're in single wall tanks, we have to switch them over either double wall tanks or build a containment system in the oil room right now, we we are not currently in compliance, these would make it in compliance.
This is a recommendation from, from deep.
From deep, yeah, yeah, that was.
From deep?
Yeah. Our store of water.
It's a final payment.
Are we, we okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. All right, next, carpet replacement. So these two just got combined according to Ellen's new paperwork, so now it's thirty six thousand for the carpet and the sign shop. That was the new figure, if I'm reading it right, Ellen?
I think the carpet, the carpet is out.
Oh, the carpet is out, it says.
And we were recommending that the sign shop stay.
Well, I'm looking at this, it says sign shop forty, new amount on page one fifty six, thirty six thousand.
Carpet looks at twenty. Right, so you have forty out of whatever worksheet you were working on, the actual amount is thirty six.
So the carpet you've already taken out?
Yes.
So we're not having permanent, so that's not.
The carpet, the carpet is good.
The carpet's still in on average.
Oh, oh, I see what you're talking about, Marie, yeah, no, I just didn't tap down on that one.
The carpet's still good. Yeah, okay. Okay, so.
So carpet replacement, DPW twenty, not highlighted, which means it's still in sign shop, I highlighted it in the gray because the amount is now thirty six, not the forty that you had thirty.
Well, it was thirty six on mine, thank you, oh, on that one, I get you, all right, well, I I'm a no for both of them.
Yeah, okay.
So a thirteen thousand for.
That stays.
They already did that.
The oil. That that one's good, so what's up now is carpet replacement, uh and the sign shop improvements.
Carpet replacement. And the sign shop. Yeah.
The carpet replacement's at DPW.
Yep.
Yeah.
I think the town hall needs carpet before DPW does.
No, I think that goes.
Was that, this wasn't in prior, right, this is the first year?
For carpet?
For this.
No.
It wasn't in last year's, right? I'm almost positive it wasn't.
No, no. This was, that's a obviously a little private item, so.
Okay, so out, out?
Oh, carpet's out. Carpet replacement, uh remove and the sign shop improvements.
Sign shop improvements is machinery that they use to make the sign shop.
What's that?
Right now, we're. Not a renovation to the actual sign shop. It's it's equipment to allow us to do, but I think, like, if you look at the um the signs for the farmer's market, we can't do it, we have to, we have to outsource to Little John on, or on Dust House Road, so you need that bigger, any anything bigger than two feet by whatever, by that width, we have to send out, we can do our own lettering and things like that, the machine, but that actually prints it onto those four by fours, whatever, we always, we have to outsource to Little John.
And what are those?
Yeah, but how do we, how much do we pay for that?
We have. We're on time. I can't hear you.
The 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 question is, how much outsourcing are we doing with the print?
Um, some days with Little John, we're up to five thousand a year, depends on the sign. It depends, it 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 ranges from a thou- you know, thousand to five thousand, it obviously depends on the year.
Yeah, yeah, Josh's finger.
So what is that machine when you walk into the sign shop, that one that's to the left? That's the one we're talking. That's what you're talking about? Yeah, that's the one that, so if we took a picture of, like, say, that Thompsonville, that sign right there and scanned it in, and you, if you folks wanted it down here as a four by four, we would have to outsource that, cause we can't print that, this kind of stuff here, any type of sign, any type of whatever, we'd be able to take an actual photograph, a JPG, a GIF, anything like that, and print it for whoever needed it.
So what's the, so what's the match them with and and lent it at that machine too, I I've seen Frank do quite a bit, quite a bit.
Because we have to seam them, so anything more than a two feet, we have to cut it, we have to print two separate pieces, put two over it, cut it down the middle, seam them, pull them apart, and do that.
Right, if we're only outsourcing a thousand to five thousand a year, I don't think this is the year
Right.
that we spend thirty six thousand dollars.
I agree.
Yeah.
And plus, we're we're giving money to local businesses too, which is a nice thing.
Yeah, that's true.
That's right.
No, we 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 can re- remove it.
Is there a consensus?
We have consensus?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
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 Okay, all right, all right, next one, uh animal shelter replacement, gate with opener, twenty five thousand.
So, this was a recommendation uh from a safety aspect, that there was uh, one of the employees incurred a shoulder injury due to the roughness of how to open that gate physically and manually.
Torn bicep from that gate.
Any uh thoughts on this?
I, my thoughts is, is that, I mean, how often the, you know, he's in there and they're already part time, I mean, they're full time dog catcher, but you know, I mean, but that gate, the scar is a torn bicep from that gate, so I know what that gate's like, but I mean, that was years ago, I mean, I thought they improved it and got those rollers that where they were uh self, self-sealed, where they didn't need to be greased.
Good thing there wasn't much of a bicep to tear.
So the gates were, they just slide across, correct?
Yeah, you just take it, all you do is take them and you slide them across.
Jeff, do you have anything to say on that? You want me to add is, you know, they're part time, full time boys, but when the, if the shelter's occupied, then they're going down there every day to feed them, make sure the water's there, clean it, so if there's animals that are there, then it's being used every day.
Twenty four grand seems awful lot, sorry.
Well, you you think what, five thousand since we got our first paperwork, cause it was twenty.
I have the series like expensive.
Now it's twenty five.
Unless it's to replace the adult.
Which one?
Almost. I'm fencing around that, I don't know.
So.
Go ahead.
Donald, I thought, sorry, I know, I know, there's one many different, but I thought at some point, we were gonna be moving that up to the DPW you're, you know, uh on Booty Road, I know that was years, you know, years and.
I had, I had a wonderful design for that and a full, modern, state of the art um animal shelter, but that uh the cost and the uncertainty of the public safety complex at the time, just watched that whole project. I have not been told to proceed any further on.
Got it, so I, okay, yep, thank you.
Uh consensus, Harry, yea or nay?
No. Nay.
No?
Nay.
Good.
I mean, I, I don't, I would say keep it in, but.
Well, that's an iffy, then, we can revisit that, cause I don't think there's consensus.
Well, we're gonna, we'll keep it as a removed item.
Yes.
All right, next, uh under EMS, EMS standby generator with the shore power.
The question I have on this is with the public safety building, um removing EMS.
Yeah, Aaron's right here.
Well, so I'll just preface that with saying, the EMS, I mean, the public safety complex is not, there's no time schedule attached to that project yet. There is, it hasn't been constituted, we're still waiting for the bond issue, this is a uh type of generator that you or I would buy at Home Depot for our house, which is the type that is now keeping our medications to temperature, and Aaron can speak to the rest of it, but I do believe that this is something that's necessary and regardless of what happens down the road, that building is going to still serve some municipal purpose probably, so it's not like it's a bad investment.
So my question.
Okay, cons- counselor right here.
So, don't you still have the two portable generators in that building?
We do, so they're, they're portable, they're like on the cards with the wheels, like your house, the issue is really, our vehicles are either trapped inside the building
Like a home, yeah.
until we're able to get that generator out and started and plugged in, or we're trapped outside of the building, because we're all on key fobs until we can get in to get the generator, and so you just have a delay in getting your services out until we can do that, those doors are so heavy, we can't, we can't, like your house, we can't pull the red cord and lift the bay door open like that, they're too heavy to do that, so it has to be on power, and so it's just, it's time. We, we can keep doing what we're doing, but we will have a delay in the ambulance out if we lose power unexpectedly.
I say we win.
Keep it in.
Yeah.
Why keep, why sixty grand now?
I say we win.
So it's a two-part project, um it's all electrical work, but it says generator with shore power, the other piece that we have is, all of our vehicles have shoreline power,
Right.
they're plugged in, because things are drying off of the battery all the time, so they have to be plugged in, we have more vehicles than we have power cords, so we're constantly switching things around, vehicles are dying, if you don't catch it at the right time, you've got dead vehicles, sometimes you get.
Sixty grand seems high, I was just saying, I'm not against.
Yeah, so, I don't know where the break is, if you did one versus the other, I would say, if you're gonna pick one, you you need the shore power to make sure your vehicles are charged and are not dying.
Counselor Nelson, I I just, if if this was our permanent home, there wouldn't be a question, I would invest a hundred percent. But the referendum passed for the public safety complex, we know we're moving EMS, and they made it fifteen years without this right now to invest in something we know is leaving, to me is a foolish investment, and that's the only reason I'm against it, if the referendum failed, then I'd be funding this a hundred percent.
Counselor, uh, Ms. Gray.
Yeah, but you, we don't have a timeline, that's my only thing, so what if it's five years to till, you know, uh uh the public safety complex is complete? I don't wanna make them wait another five years, you know?
Then they're almost fifteen now with it all in.
Yeah, but I I almost think that's a, that's a reason for it, but, but I, and I hear you, and I I I get it.
Well, it's a, you know, a conversation probably for another day, I would argue that that building, while small, is in good condition and you should consider keeping it, EMS is, is only gonna get bigger, it gives you coverage on the other side of ninety one, I
Right. A little bit there.
I say no.
That would be my, my argument back, I, you know, it's your choice, but it isn't.
Yeah. That's true. Yeah. Deputy Mayor Sicola, and then Counselor Manijani.
Uh, I'm good, never mind.
Oh, okay, Counselor Manijani.
I uh am concerned about what um Erin was talking about, timeliness, the, these people in EMS are working in barbaric conditions, it's a fact. And God bless you for doing what you do, so if her department, if she's looking to um im- improve and put forward a safety element, I can't see why we would not support her request, I would definitely support this.
Me too.
Because I'm looking at it as a safety issue, I mean, God forbid they get stuck behind the door and can't get out, and there is an emergency. I I wouldn't want that to be responsible.
Counselor Ongar.
Um, so when EMS transfers over to the new public safety complex, are you, do you still wanna keep a presence there, is that what I heard you say?
It's what I'm saying.
So like maybe in this part of town, you'd be able to get to Turker?
I I would, that would be my professional recommendation, yeah.
You can put a coal twenty thousand one generator in. Gas fire.
Thank you.
I got one question.
Yeah, Counselor Bear, uh Donald, um we don't have those, like, the military generally go and transfer station that, it's sit there.
How much is that?
There's nothing that we can do to help us later on that we can do with that. The two that we received from military surplus, one is being used at the transfer station, one is being used uh in a permanent capacity at the transfer station right now, because we cannot find a replacement for it.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, explain to me the shoreline piece of it, right, cause is that the expensive part of it, like, it, I don't know what that, the shore power, what is that, all right?
We need a total upgraded service, electrical service, that's, we need to revamp the entire, if there's not enough power there, even if they have, let's say, the eight cords to go plug in their ambulances, there isn't enough power to power the eight cords to power the ambulances, it needs a whole new upgrade,
So.
starting on the street.
Okay, and so is there an alternative of getting another generator? Or is that gonna just present the same problems where you can't get in or you can't get out, and then there's still a delay, like, I, that's not acceptable to me if that's going to cause a delay, and if it's gonna cause a delay, because another generator's not gonna do it, and if you need this, then far be it for me to pretend that I know better. Right, I'm not a, not a generator expert by any means, I, you know, my, in my brain, it should be like an on-demand generator, power goes off, it immediately transfers over, You're a liar. Yeah. There's no hauling equipment out and throwing cords out and firing it up, um, yeah, it's just, it's the backup generator just kicks in, um, but I, you know. Yeah. It's like a backup generator, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, this one's not, uh, I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah.
See, my, my, my overall concern is what you had mentioned before in regard to uh, you know, the medications, you know, and making sure that they're, you know, have the right temperature at all times, because I know during the summer it gets too hot, and in winter it gets too cold, you have to have that happy median. So, uh tough, tough situation right here, Counselor.
Um, what if, with the generator figure about twenty grand, what if we give the money for the generator? I I s- I get it, but I don't wanna be upgrading a building when in theory, we may not be selling that building, I mean, the the point of doing some consolidation of buildings is eventually to save the taxpayers' money, so, and what if we got you a generator, I mean, twenty grand or so in the, yeah, I'm willing to give you something, but sixty grand seems too much for me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't know the, I'm not sure on the price breakdown that was.
Yeah.
It's that there's a lot of it has to do with upgrading the service.
Yeah, we have electric, it's the electrical upgrade, yeah.
And where it's located.
Is twenty grand worth it, or no, you need the whole sixty?
Yeah. Could you do it for less?
I I would have, I'll create the whole service.
Well, that's what I'm saying, and so the, the generator you're talking about, they can't do, cause they need to upgrade, and I say no, I'm a no.
That's a good question, yeah. Right. Okay.
All right, so, all right, who who's a yes, raise your hand, one, two, three, four.
It's a tough one. Can I go halfway?
No.
Yes, yes or no?
Black or white?
Remember, there's no maybes.
Well, even if it's a no, even if it's a no, it's a maybe.
Okay, so. A no, no, one, two, three, four, five.
All right, I hope it's none of your family members.
I was just thinking.
So, make it a mark.
No, no, I'm telling you.
They made it fifteen years and people are still alive.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, town hall, here we go. Carpet replacement.
Yes.
Where are we?
Carpet replacement, town hall, is that a remove, yes, or to keep, I'm a yes, keep it.
Is that everywhere?
I don't have to. Yeah, I mean, some of this has been redone, I'm.
Can you give us a, I'm sorry, can I ask that, through, Donald, uh I guess whoever wants to talk, I had a question, um, where, is it everywhere?
Yes.
Where is the carpet that we're replacing?
It'd be the, everywhere, we're again, not here, we're not in buildings, since we just did it, be all floors.
And and how long have we been deferring this?
Not this room, that building.
Since I've been here.
Yeah.
Since I was uh, yeah. And you can see it when you walk in this building, it's not.
And what is, I'm sorry, before I'm before I've done, what's the fifty thousand then for the next fiscal year? Cuz there's two hundred for this one and then the fifty for the next year. What would that be?
That I'm not sure.
Okay.
Good, Consular.
But the project would be complete, right?
Yeah, we'd be going for all the common area uh hallways and whatever offices haven't been upgraded, so.
Okay.
Okay, Consular Despar.
This is just where I start to feel a little bit like, so we just said no to a generator that could be involved in my life-saving.
I agree with you. I agree with you, Matt, should we know on this too?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't I don't, yeah, I'm not sure about that. I mean, I don't, I know this is probably nuts, right? You you could do this with everything, but you know, could we replace the carpets here for a hundred and forty thousand? And pay for the generator for sixty thousand?
I've got your generator, take this.
You're not leaving the Town Hall, that's the difference. If we were keeping EMS where they were.
Right. I I get you, we don't know.
And if in their new building, they want a generator, I'll, I got no problem.
Right, we just don't know how many years, you know, how many years that's gonna be.
Well, the referendum passed, right now it's in a glitch and hopefully it moves forward quick. If this might light a fire under somebody to get it moving.
Alright.
Right, it's just sixty thousand.
No generator, no carpets, please. And to the point, again, two hundred thousand dollars is a big enchilada. That's a lot of money.
You're just a change of won't put together in the restaurant?
So.
And and if we had to, you could do fifty one year, fifty another year, break it into pieces and parts.
I had carpet last night.
Or come back later and listen, but I that's forty two hundred, those dollars for carpet.
With what?
Do it for a year.
Alright.
Exactly.
Do it for a year.
That's right.
Alright.
So.
Lloyd, Deputy Mayor Salat.
Sorry, but stop to belabor the point. I am for this carpet, we I'm, we will go back to the generator eventually because I will scream and yell about it.
No. We agreed last night to hold it, that looks like shit, like we want it.
But we will go back to it, um but I don't wanna barter one for the other right now, I don't think that that's that's the way to go. I will say that I want the generator back, but moving forward.
Right, right, I know, right. Right, right. Gotcha, yep.
So the Town Hall is the first impression a lot of times where people get of this town, and if this has been deferred for a long time, I'd say do it. I'm not saying carpet, please don't go on and quote me that I think carpet is more important than a generator, I am not saying that. I am saying I want both funded, but I would say yes to carpet at this point.
Did you just one, Donald, did you guys do the carpet in uh the building department? Did you do it yourself in-house?
B and B and G did that in-house, we were planning to do.
Did you do it on your job? That office looks beautiful.
We're planning on doing finance in-house as well.
Are you gonna do all the common corridors here or sub that out?
That would be all subbed out because of all the furniture moving, they try to hit it all quickly, so just coming with it.
Okay.
Hopefully with a generous amount of labor to come in, hurry up, rip it out and try to not do it during the daytime.
Alright, so we don't go green again.
Alright. Alright. In favor of the carpet, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, and again. One, two, three, four, so.
And.
Alright, now what?
Yeah, I'm sorry, so it stays?
Yeah, Town Hall bathroom renovations, hundred fifty thousand.
Question, so, Matt.
So let me ask you a question, why didn't we sit at the council's?
Didn't we? I don't see it in the line, but didn't we push this back from last year?
Didn't we? Well, we made a consensus on the whole thing, okay?
This is a morse effect project.
Okay, so we gonna start here or not? That, oh, you're fine.
I know.
But we made a deal together.
Go ahead, Matt.
But.
We funded funded a portion of this already, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
It it was funded part of ARPA class that last year, it made up Y twenty-three.
ARPA, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So part of it's already done, this is the remaining part, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. Oh, wait, don't, just to clarify, Consular, just to clarify, Consular, we we received three hundred thousand dollars last year.
Yeah.
There's like way too much.
Sign talking.
On here.
We received three hundred thousand dollars last year. We went out, we went out for an architect, we have a, we had it professionally designed, it is ready to go off the bed. The architect submitted us a a cost estimate and this would, the three hundred thousand plus the one fifty minus whatever we spent on our architectural engineering field should be enough to redo all three floors of the of Town Hall.
Gotcha, okay, okay.
So this is the last.
This is the last installment.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, who's good with the bathroom renovations?
Yep.
Yeah, three, four, five.
Sorry, three hundred grand last year, one fifty, right? So, got it, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yep, they go, that that's in, we're good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, next, Town Hall exterior painting uh millwork.
Yes.
Now, does this also have to do with the gazebo?
No, this is strictly Town Hall millwork, so all the.
Just. Well, the gazebo is Town Hall too, as far as I'm concerned.
All of all of the uh trim and the columns out front, the gutter boxes that the gutters are in. Uh all that, if you go actually go outside and look, rid of the.
Not not the cool floor though, right?
No, that is included.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
We should re-repaint the.
Yeah. So this is, this is gonna be another whole day here.
Mm-hmm.
Uh funded project.
Seven third.
Yeah.
But if if this was a public, a private building, would you light it? That's how bad the paint's peeling out.
Yeah, and it is, it is lead-based paint, so we had tested it and it's gonna need to be.
It's lead.
That's. So that's why it's not.
Well, just don't, just tell the painters, don't eat it.
Town Hall's gonna make over.
Alright, so we're we're good keeping this in?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, next.
And just for you guys, it's three fifty from last year from the bathrooms, it's on the next line, but it was last year on there? It was just on two different lines.
Three, it's three fifty, huh?
Yeah, you'll see it there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's the, yeah, it's right there.
Gotcha.
So is that, is that enough to fund them now? Five hundred?
Yep.
Yeah, five hundred minus the arfees, so that's what the, that's what our architect submitted to us as an opinion, a probable cost.
So on.
Right. Okay, good. Alright, uh fleet forklift for sixty-five thousand?
No.
No?
No, I'm not gonna get two words.
Uh but.
It's a replacement for a nineteen ninety-five, it's a straight replacement.
It works.
It works?
It works, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, so, we in agreement, this uh take off, remove?
No.
Is this the first time you guys have put this in the budget? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, next, back home.
He's got a brand new uh excavator.
So.
We ready, we're we're gonna remove this?
Where is this for? Or is this for everywhere or any specific?
This is highway. Yeah, this this was put in under fleet, but it's not for fleet.
Okay.
It's for highway.
Uh we good, well, we're gonna remove this, we good with removing?
Yes.
Yes, do you don't need it?
Okay.
Well, that's the way it does the same thing for us.
Alright. On on the bottom, uh it says B and G boom lift. Um, Manijani Electric, what what is this, a a uh?
Scissor lift.
No, this is for, for.
Is this for a garage door opener?
No, this is when we, again, we we spend about fifteen thousand dollars a year in rentals through B and G. Uh this is one of our primary rentals and that if if the if this table was the annex pool, okay? The lights that are above the pool, we can't reach without having this super sophisticated way of getting, actually putting things into the pool and building staging up through that. There the machine that we rent all the time to reach those weird places actually can go on the edge and we have uh one of our staff people actually above the water and that's how they get it up up there, the machine stays on the deck. That's all, cuz it reaches into very odd.
You know, skyjacks, right?
And but if it's not a scissor jack or goes straight up, this actually is is worse than which, it can, it goes three hundred and sixty degrees, it moves up and around and that's where we get all our weird spaces through JFK and EHS and here. And uh and annex.
Okay, question.
And I'm sorry, you said you spend fifteen thousand on rentals in general or fifteen thousand on rentals for this?
Rentals in general, but for down, like, so when we do the tree, uh we have to get a boom lift in for that, but after that, we rent this one out, we rent this one out.
Yeah.
You're still gonna have to rent the ones for the tree.
Yeah.
So at some point, I mean, the the return would would be instead of five years, gonna be ten years.
So when you rent a machine out like that, is, I don't know, you just, did you just say it was it's a yearly rental?
No, no, we it's it's, if we need it for a week, we need it for a day, we need it for a month, depends on what we're doing for the project.
While of school, they just were told that we're putting a solar park in there.
Oh, no.
Can't, I just.
What?
While of park, we're taking the park out and put the solar, they're pissed. I just, it's all the rumors, I heard slash pass, but this is the newest.
Yes or no, I say no.
Another one, right?
Uh, let's revoke unless you vote, could could take this off or keep on?
I mean, is this a one or a wish?
I'm against this one.
Okay, so we're gonna revoke, okay, boom lift, we good with that, or or we're removing? Alright, next, um B and G enclosed uh enclosed trailers for hours, is this uh be an upgrade? Or the other trailers are shot?
Just replacing agent.
They had a, they had a brand new one when I was down there at Sculley, so that one's still good, right?
Yes.
And all they had was that one there, if I remember correct, cuz the other one was crappy, but yeah, the open trailer's still taking dollars out. I'm saying no.
Uh Deputy Mayor Saccala.
Okay, um how many enclosed trailers you have versus the ones that are just not enclosed?
I don't have an inventory of how many enclosed trailers we have, I cannot, I I find out.
Okay. Is this? Well, no, I'm just, if, I mean, if it's on here, you need it, then, I mean, it's fifteen thousand. So my worry is, and this is sort of a blanket worry, is if we say, keep saying no to all these smaller ones and even some of the larger ones, keep in mind that we have C I P forecasted out for the next five years, guys. So this is gonna have to come up, you're gonna have to pay the piper at some point. We're not gonna be able to kick every can down the road, like, we gotta take some now.
Gina, I agree with you.
Like that's, I can't, I'm not gonna be okay with taking everything out.
I agree with you a hundred percent. Unfortunately, I'm walking into a budget where you guys took five million dollars last year from fund balance to fund operations. We need to make that up this year. This ain't a year to start putting a whole shitload of C I P down when we need to do to cover that. That's why I will never support operation budget with fund balance. One-time issues, absolutely, but not fun uh not operations.
So if I can just finish, like, that's fine, but I'm not gonna take the blame for the mess that we're in over the last fifteen years, so we're not gonna play that game. We're gonna figure out what we can do this year.
Yeah, I I was just gonna say, I felt really good when we first started this, felt like there was some some give and take, and now it just feels like, you know, just it's predetermined, hard line, nobody even wants to listen, so. That feels bad to me that there can't be any sort of um, you know, convincing either way, it's just a set list of demands, I just, I don't know that that works. And bipartisanly.
The only thing we didn't agree to was the generator, everything else, we're all on the same page, so that's one thing, man.
I I get you, that's my worry, it's just my worry that that we're just, this is a hard set of of hard line here and then what are we even doing or wasting our time if. We can't have a a discussion and 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 give and take, which I think it was great, the ARPA thing, like, you know, moving the two hundred, we saved money there, the sinking fund, this is all good stuff. I would just, in that sphere, and I would like to continue and um just, yeah, be able to have conversations about this stuff. Um that isn't incredibly hard line, and if I'm assuming that's what's gonna happen, I apologize and let's just.
Alright, well, okay, thank you, uh we we will be moving onward and one thing I am just gonna mention. Is let's just focus on what we need to focus in on. The past was the past, this is the present, let's stay focused on what we have to get done. Bipartisanshiply here.
Yeah, right.
So, alright, so next is the, okay, the trailer.
The trailers, I say no.
I'm a yes.
Uh let's let's do a hand vote, yes, raise your hand. No? Okay, we'll remove. Alright, next one is the blower attachment for JFK tractor.
Yep.
Oh my god.
What's this one here, this for uh, Donald?
Just from, get it for field maintenance and for all parking lots and stuff like that, so the tractor does not have one on it now. We were, we were fortunate to have it through the um. Through the school project, but that attachment was not part of it.
Right, you guys got just, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yes.
Good, we're 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 okay with this one?
Yeah, so the JFK committee funded, I think, what, like a snow removal and a tractor specifically for JFK, which is awesome, so that's not a, that's not a cost to us, it's just the attachment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah.
But this this finishes it off and completes it.
Right.
Yep. Yep.
So we good with this, everyone?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, next, the uh sixty-inch mower. This is zero turn. How old are the mowers that we have?
Their range, there's such a wild range of of ages and conditions, this is just, but.
There are that replacement plan.
Is this part of the plan?
So I I originally, I believe, I had three on there and we moved it down to one.
You still gonna keep the Hustler brand?
Yes.
So this is just for one, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Now, but Deputy Mayor Saccala.
No, I keep, I keep yelling and I mean not to, so this is just for one?
Yeah, I think these came from uh from the school when they combined, I think, uh.
Yeah, be for one.
Yes, that there there, it's been, there's some that are aged.
Yeah, one one of the sixteen footers just came from the uh, one that we were supposed to work on. Um from the schools, but it most still run, I mean, I know it's it's like kicking something down the can, uh can down the road, but.
There's a lot of.
So when, so when there's maintenance issues with with these zero turns, our mechanic takes care of this or do we outsource this?
No. No, any any plated vehicle, equipment maintenance or fleet, always on the fleet takes care of it, on plated vehicles. Anything without a place, this is your zero turns or walk behinds or string trimmers, staff from B and G takes care of it, they cannot fix it, then it gets outsourced.
Where where do we go?
I don't, it depends on the machine, we have Toro's, we have Husky, we have a whole variety of machines, but they work on anything non-plated.
Okay.
Alright. So, is this, this is for a zero turn? Yeah, I looked at him and he acknowledged me, so relax, alright.
So are we good with the zero turn? I mean, there's.
I'm good with one, because I think we gotta keep a replacement plan.
This isn't the sixteen footer, the duck?
No.
Sixteen footer is about a hundred fifty thousand.
Okay.
The vehicle, we were able to get that last year, it's on a twelve to fifteen.
I got a lot of regret.
The area zero turns.
Don Donald, sorry, you, the plan, so I'm curious, so they were, we're buying this or releasing it? I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure I understand what you said, well, we are.
I'll buy.
Correct.
And then over a certain amount of time, we we we.
Similar to the vehicle replacement, we try to do because these take such a beating, they're not, you know, it's just.
Okay, yeah. Yeah. Similar idea, but thank you.
Yeah, you have them out for the next five or so years on the C I T, every year.
Yes.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yep.
So I I have to say that the the brand that you use, the Hustler Zero Turn, I know that you get good usage out of it, it's good shelf life on, it's well worth the investment.
I think Toro's better.
Tell me again, take it from a partner, okay? Alright, alright, who's uh in favor of uh the tractor? Okay, we're keep that in, good. Alright, next, bathroom cleaning machines.
Is that a hose?
Is that a stow yard? I mean, well, what's a bathroom cleaning machine?
They are, so I have to look this up. They they look like a Shark vacuum, it's got a pressure washer attachment to it. And they they use it to sanitize the reservoirs. Scrubber.
How many?
Say that again?
How many it looks like?
They were uh looking for five.
And how many do we have now?
None.
I don't know. How many?
None.
So five of them per sixteen, five per sixteen, sounds like a deal.
Yes.
Five per sixteen.
Sold.
Yeah, well, we're really gonna choose, we still have the bathrooms, I I have a good size.
We good with this?
I don't know, I assume, well, we do three, two, three.
They can use.
Yeah.
I've got a three.
They can use three.
Stairwell.
It's like six thousand dollars.
Yeah. The stairwell.
But still, you want your generator back?
We need to evolve this.
Hey, we need to start coming up with something for your generator.
So this bathroom cleaning machine is this plug-in or battery-operated?
It's battery.
It's battery operated and it's like a pressure washer?
Yeah.
Right? It's like a five, it's like a.
Looks like a, looks like a Shark Jack.
It's a five gallon that you think you just pick up and bring to all your toilets.
You can give the optional backpack attachment for it, there's all sorts of stuff for it.
So similar to our Squaresprbers and our other sprbers, we move them around because it's school to school, so this is not school, it's.
Six hundred.
Devine five, five.
We. So take out the.
We three, yeah.
Ninety-six hundred.
I already had it up, so.
These things are pretty cool.
Yeah, we're.
Three, yeah, ninety-six hundred is three of them.
Yeah, ninety-six hundred.
Yeah. We good with that?
How much rate?
Ninety-six hundred.
Ninety-six hundred.
So you get to decide which bathrooms get to be sanitized and which don't.
Alright, so, three for ninety-six?
Yeah.
Alright. Everybody got that and we're good with that? Alright. Okay, uh, alright, here we go, moving right along. The next item here is the freshwater pond dredging, the land services for two hundred fifty thousand.
This is required, yes.
So this is, this is a, this is required, correct?
Every five years, per Army Corps, United States Army Corps of Engineers, we have to re- to dredge the pond, right now, we were given uh. Right now, we were given uh a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars last year for engineering. The company was out last week doing the bathymetrics, which is basically a scan of the of the sediment and material underneath to decide and kind of estimate how much junk's gonna come out. But that is one hundred percent required through Army Corps. And believe it or not, it's been five years, it'll be five years next year.
Yeah, I thought we just added it to the budget.
Doesn't it feel like it was just last year, no, it's not, it's not, it's just.
Only that was last year, that's why.
I thought the other two fifty wasn't just in the budget?
Yeah, right, can I just?
Just, we do.
But Deputy Mayor Scott.
Um, so this would be something that, in my opinion, for future, we start putting some money in the sinking fund and use this in the end, so every five years, we don't get tagged for the two fifty. So I understand it's a requirement, let's do it, let's fund it this year, but I do think this is one of those exact, like, the exact reasons we have a sinking fund, let's start putting the money in there every year of fifty thousand each, whatever, cause at five years, that's two hundred and fifty and we don't get tagged in five years for this. If any of us are still here.
Counselor Fager.
So if this passes and he and he dredged a pond, can he just give it to butlers instead of bringing it to the transfer station, please? He takes it anyways.
I was, I was uh, I was told by a previous town manager where where that would be disposed of, so. Where the spoils are going.
Okay, so so we're we're good keeping this in?
For next year, let's do something. Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
I think we asked it, right?
Okay, all right, next, the Orlando Drive culvert replacement. Uh so, so here we are, this is the third year.
It's gotta get done, because they've found it real bad down there.
You guys were trying to get annoyed.
And people, and I yelled at them.
We we do the emergency.
This I feel like we've been funding forever.
We have.
All right. Remember that?
We have been funding this forever.
Well over a million dollars.
I know.
Yeah.
So is this the final payment?
This is it.
No, we're funding it for three years.
Yeah, this is it.
Forever, that's what I feel like.
Wow, but we think the one year we're doing a hundred grand, wasn't it?
Um, no, two years ago, sixty-nine, which was the referendum amount, last year was a half a million, there's a reimbursement from the state.
Yeah. It's a big wow.
Right, and we.
Yes, we can.
Okay, we're good.
Yeah, we all know what issues we had.
Yeah, all right, so one twenty-five thousand.
Right.
So. All right, that's staying.
So Donald, just curious, so that, I know you, you initially did the work down there, you had a nice little Yankee interduity, cause we were down there. This, this, again, not, it solves the issue, knowing all the erosion.
What issue?
Yeah, so when we first started this, we were gonna do a one-for-one replacement of it, we had an eighty-four inch culvert.
Yep.
Just a plain old round pipe that we were gonna line and put a new head wall, so the beginning of the pipe and the end of the pipe. Fisheries and deep uh were involved, and now we are at a six-and-a-half-foot tall arch that is thirteen feet wide with an open bottom with uh native stream bed material from some stream bed that was, whatever it was, that it's on the bottom of it, costs quadrupled having that requirement from the state.
So I don't, again, I'm not trying to put you in the spot, but I know that connects, I I know I'm not using my words correctly to the, I'll use the word culvert, that's down on my Martin uh Meadowlark.
Yep.
We're gonna redo those roads, you know, that's, I think that's coming up, does that all, how does that all tie in?
We're, it it's it's all set.
Okay.
Yeah, we're totally good with that, our engineers have looked into that right now. We have a substantial beaver problem on the back of Orlando Drive on the new place on the right, well, the
Right.
The place has just changed hands, I can't think of the name of them right now. But that complex there, there's a beaver dam back there, which we have to liberate and that will resolve a lot of upstream, and we also found another area pipe right now, we're D P W, we're highways out there, we can start digging it right now.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, so moving on, uh contribution to roads, five hundred thousand, you gotta stay, it's gotta stay, we're good?
Can we just, I mean, Mayor, I think for the new people, I think it would be good if Donald could just explain the interplay between
Yeah. Oh, okay.
The um those grant.
Actually, that that probably is, I can better explain that.
That's that's John all the way, John does all the way.
You defer, right?
So, so we have, as part of the referendum, when when it's voted on, if you remember, like, for roads two thousand fifteen, it was sixty million dollars,
All right, John, who's good with it?
But we're only allowed to bond fifty-seven and a half million. So that two and a half million, we did the same thing with roads uh twenty-twenty-one where we can bond two and a half million dollars less, and we fund that through annual contributions into the um into the the roads project itself. So if you look at the roads project itself, it's got money coming in from bonding and money coming in from this annual transfer, adding up to thirty million dollars and then going out of it's the individual road projects that we're actually doing. This five hundred thousand is the actual transfer that comes in, but we offset that because the state gives us LOSE money every year and we use these, we assign that to this, one of these projects. So the amount that actually impacts the uh the taxpayer in in any given year is the net of those two, so it's a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. That's why I show them on here separately, we're putting five hundred thousand dollars into the project, but we're also offsetting it with the money that we're getting from LOSE.
Good, thank you for that explanation, yeah. Matt, we good with that?
Yes.
That make sense?
Yep.
Cindy?
Can I just, um, for clarification, so we are offsetting the total of the five, but we're keeping the five in the C I P? Why can't we back it out to the three eighty-five if we already, we're getting some from LOSE?
Well, it's, it basically, it it's two separate transactions, I've got money that a revenue source that comes into um the the fund, but the five hundred thousand dollars has to go over to the roads project fund. All right, and and so I I wanna show that, rather than show a hundred eighty-five thousand going over to the roads fund, then maybe it's like, well, how did we get to five hundred thousand? I wanna show the five hundred thousand actually going over there, and then it's offset the amount that hits the taxpayer is netted against that.
So we need to keep it the way it is then, thank you.
Yeah. I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, next, Kimberly Drive drainage outlets, two hundred fifty thousand. Those were, those, okay, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No?
I was just saying, it looks like they're forecasted out for the next couple of years, so we have to, so we're just contributing to what we know we're gonna have to do.
Donald? Right.
Right now, we have a, in our sewer and drainage easement, I think between forty-seven, forty-nine, Kimberly, we have a washout that exposed uh a step-down system of manholes, so they're completely exposed right now, so this is to, we've already had this out for design. We are ready to go out to bid to go replace that, uh there's a drain, there's a flare inside that dugs water into the brook that comes from Kimberly Drive, and there's also a sewer easement in that same, there's sewer line in that whole system in that same easement. That all failed at that escarpment, which is again continually eroding, as we all know, on Kimberly. So right now, this would be for the work to possibly do that first one, then again, we know that there's gonna be others that are coming down the pipe.
Kimberly Drive.
Thank you.
Yes.
So I would think.
So we.
Yeah.
I guess.
So Donald, only question, knowing that whole, that whole escarpment throughout the town, is there anywhere, is any federal money at some point, or? I mean, unfortunately, this may be an issue we deal with for a long time.
Yeah.
I know there it sort of started, but.
Yeah, we're just worried about those, I can't believe that we have easements on.
Right.
For our, it turns like a drainage easement or sewer easement because of the exposure to it, so that's what we're focusing on now. I know there's plenty of bright stuff, Ed Drive, plenty of those out there.
Right. Yeah, all right, thank you.
All right, thanks, uh we good with keeping this in?
Yep.
Everybody's good with that?
Yep.
Okay, good, the next one, uh the crack seal program, a hundred thousand dollars.
I'd like to add another fifty thousand to it.
And I was gonna say, take it out and go over fifty over the next two years.
We gotta start maintaining these new roads, drive down some of the roads that are five years old. Well, I I really think, I mean, a small investment now is gonna save us. That's where I I I say leave it for sure, but I'd like to add fifty to it.
You can ask Donald what a hundred gets us.
Yeah, so that is a very robust program, that hundred thousand dollars, J P has done one similar. Uh he's done a wonderful job with how how many miles we can get out of that. Um I do think we gotta get back on it to someone, Council Nelson said, you know, either we uh put seventy-five now and seventy-five next year to kind of just to keep the program going, or we'll we'll take anything that can help us with our road maintenance and doing that. Again, it's typical between five to seven years after paving a new road that cracks will start to show up. Our pavement is designed for twenty years, that's from brand new to just uh to basically impassable is that we try to get twenty years out of it, that's the minimum design for conduct, so that's what we work with. So again, it's not uncommon to see cracks on five-to-seven-year-old roads, and that's where the cracks extends the life of that, through that. So someone, to echo what Council Nelson said, that little bit of investment now will save us a considerable amount in the future.
So my question, Donald, would be, um, a hundred thousand dollars, we do this in-house?
No.
Oh, we don't do this?
No, this is all contracted up.
Then I don't think, I was worried that we couldn't do a hundred fifty thousand.
No, a hundred percent contracted, we have J P um go with them and to get, take measurements, it makes it do all the temperature measurements and things like that.
Yep, okay. Again, I think it's neglected and it needs to get done.
My 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 big concern with with the roads is our u- the utilities, they come in, you know, you just have a brand-new road done and next thing you know, they're 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 cutting the road, and that's 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 a big issue. You know, I wish that there was a little better communication that, you know, before those roads come in, the utilities had whatever their plan was, you know, to get a little little better communication so that they don't cut these roads up right after they get paved.
Post office load.
And make a month.
We do do that, we do do that.
Huh?
Mayor.
Donald can address it.
Yeah, please, Mayor, to to that end, when when roads fif- two thousand fifteen came in, that's when I I I got at the tail end of ten and the beginning of fifteen, we had utility coordination meetings um with everybody, giving all of the utilities, every single one of the utilities, the road, the street list and the years that it corresponds to. We requested them to come back to us saying, are you gonna do it, are you not gonna do it, and they gave us all the list of what everything was going on. So we coordinated our schedules accordingly. Uh last year, J P, or two years ago, J P did the same thing too, again, he sent out to all the utilities. We got back on some of the, some of the items, they did, they're working on, House of Water is working on some, uh Connecticut Water is working up High Street on McCon, doing water main work there ahead of us, which is for next year. Uh there are some unfortunate incidents, again, like what happened on Stephen, you know, the water main break. Um we've been in discussion with them and they they may be reconsidering, but we don't know at this point. But right now, we have information stating back in twenty-one, November twenty-one, that that area was not on their list to redo. And we have unfortunately no, we have no power to mandate them or force them to replace their utilities ahead of us. That is something that is, um, I wish I wish we could, but we haven't, I don't have that power to do so. We can recommend and we can suggest, but it just, it, some of it, they just don't have the money, cause the mother, they're doing the similar operation like you are now of what streets to do, they need to make a decision on their own, yeah.
All right, thank you. Deputy Mayor Scott.
I would just say again, I think this is something that needs to be funded in a certain amount or some amount every year, so we don't do this every couple of years. Let's put in fifty thousand next year, fifty thousand the year after, so you don't come, you know, I'm not saying this is a you thing, but for the future councils, just keep in mind, some of these things that we know are coming, it's a lot less pal- it's a lot more palatable to do smaller amounts every year, so it's in there in whatever sinking fund or whatever you wanna deal, bring it out of. But this is good budgeting to put some in every year, so it's not a massive amount in the end. I'm not saying a hundred thousand is a massive, just for future, let's let's put a million in every year.
No, I, if if I, I I go that.
Right, but last year, you guys didn't fund that.
Yeah. I, to Deputy Mayor's um suggestions, I I would a hundred percent echo that, I'd rather have a little less and do something every single year and stop and then have a, have a glut, cause it's more taxing on my engineering staff. That's right now, because again, it's a bigger project, it's more time, it's more whatever. I'd rather, again, have this as a consistent thing like that you was, we just kind of, things just kind of fell off last year, but I'd rather keep it consistent.
Yep, whoever's here next year, remind them of this conversation.
So so to that end, would it be better to do one fifty now or seventy-five now and seventy-five next year? Yes.
No, we gotta catch up.
Right. Right. Right.
So he can keep up, and that's all I'm saying, is this will help him catch up, and then if we do fifty or seventy-five every year, he can stay.
Yeah. Right.
You know, five years behind.
But I, yeah, my question is, if we're gonna allocate one fifty, saying that it's a big undertaking, should we do seventy-five this year and seventy-five next year? Or we'll just one fifty? I would not recommend one fifty, Counselor, it's just, it's just too big, it's just too big of a job, and by the time.
Okay, gotcha, right.
So fifty goes next year. So by the time some of these streets age, like I was telling about, like the five to seven years, we may not need some of them now, but they may be aging and they're gonna be, they'll be perfect candidates in a in a year or two, by have, by being a little more consistent, like, so, and, you know, like Deputy Mayor and and Counsel Nelson, I I would rather that.
Perfect.
From a professional point of view.
Thank you. Thank you. But so Donald, um, when somebody cuts into a new road, do we still have the policy in place that they do the patch today and then they have to come back in twelve months and do it again?
They have to mill it afterwards, yes, they're required them to mill to the center line.
Right, center line to curb.
Center line to the curb, and if they breached the, so if they're on, if they had a service on the east side of the road and they cross the center line going westerly, they have to go the full width all the way across. But if they stay on one side of the road, they only have to mill to the center line or to where the uh the line's driving us.
In twelve months, twelve months after the repair.
We have, yes.
Yes, because to prevent when.
There is. To settle, for settling and everything else, they do come back and cut it and, you know, or again, and mill it out and pave it after.
Right. Right, cause Neelens Road area, there's quite a few residents that are upset, again, brand-new road got cut. And now it's compacted down and through the town manager, I believe, she said, you contact the utility, they're coming back out
Yes.
to do their twelve-month repair, okay?
All right, so we're we're good with this?
With a hundred, I guess.
Okay, next, the Storm Sewer relining, five hundred thousand.
Absolutely.
We're trying to get out of the business, Mayor, of replacing lines instead of trying to be a little, again, trying to be more proactive, like on Bass Drive. The cost to replace the, the cost to replace the drainage on Bass Drive, that half that we will do is a million-something dollars, we can line it for half of that, we'll be, we're we're ahead of the game. Similar to, similar to W P C lining.
All right, great.
What is the, what is the? Yeah. What is the life expectancy of the remining?
Forty, fifty years.
Okay.
Okay, next, uh ambulance remount.
Yep.
That's good.
Okay, that's good. Ambulance ram forty-five hundred.
Yep.
Everybody in agreement with that? Okay?
So, Chief, so how long, so I'm assuming if you will go out the bit, or, so would we look at one a year? I mean, two years?
One, two, this, this, actually, this ram forty-five hundred, I would have put in fiscal year twenty-five, but it's taking two, three years,
Two years, right.
so we're trying to get it now, get it ordered, so that we take it probably fiscal year twenty-six, and it's like.
So what about, so what about the, we brought on that used one, is that in the meantime, I mean, just curious?
Yeah, yes, um.
But are there other vehicles?
We are down two vehicles for um just recall issues, so that extra vehicles is kind of filling that gap.
Right. Got it. Yeah.
Just note, in probably fiscal year twenty-six, I will come back for probably sixty thousand dollars in stretcher equipment. We normally put it all together in one big package, but the stretcher equipment has warranties and it's coming in quicker, so if we order it now, it's gonna sit in storage and then our warranty wouldn't be good, so it's gonna get ordered later.
So you, you put a bid on a forty-five hundred, say tomorrow?
Say that again?
If you put a bid on, do you prepay or do you have to?
Nope, you pay when you receive the vehicle.
Got it, so in theory.
But the but the line, the funds need to be there for me to place it.
But in theory, though, at two eighty-four, two years from now, could be, could be.
It could be two years from now. Well, well, we'll lock in on the price.
God, okay, yeah, all right, that was just.
Right, we lock in on the price.
But we may not pay for another year.
We're not pay, but we lock in on the price.
But thank you, appreciate it.
All right, thanks, all right, uh Counselor Nelson.
Did we get the used ambulance, is that on the road now?
Yes, we did, um it will be inspected next week by the state.
Okay, good. Okay, next, uh item here is ten police cruisers, seven hundred fifty thousand.
I'd like to change it to six.
We already dropped it. It was, but it, what were we starting out with at the beginning?
I think the uh D P W had, well, no, that was, fourteen was, I think.
That was last year.
Slid out of there at thirteen.
Um, they started at eleven, twelve, I think, is it, that was on their capital plan.
I think a lot of it.
He, um, well, ten year, ten is what he sent us, in, well, when he proposed it to us, it was ten.
Right.
Right.
That's.
But again, this goes along with.
That's, cause I I, oh, sorry. Well, they they have um approximately fifty uh police uh patrol vehicles and detective vehicles and uh five-year basis is what we're trying to get on to, so we can replace them all every five years. We we had done um six, I think, four years ago, three years ago, then uh then I, we did ten and we did fourteen last year, was that what we?
Last year doesn't show anything.
But no, we ended up to thirteen because of the price.
But you know, we didn't. Right, we ended up over the last three years, including twenty. Right, we ended up over the last three years, including twenty three, it was thirty vehicles that we replaced and ten will keep us.
I don't know why it's like that.
Um.
We used DARPA, I think.
We did use DARPA, we have.
Yeah, it's like that, but.
But that's what I, so I will just say that there is a vehicle replacement plan for a purpose, and so we have to figure out where the priority is in terms of adhering to it so as we're not continually shifting around year after year. Uh the recommendation is ten, I will, I mean Captain Golden is here, but I will tell you that these are not typical cars associated with a fleet. They're used three shifts, twenty four hours a day, so the depreciation piece of that is much different than your typical vehicle that a typical town employee is driving. Um I mean, I know that you guys brought a bunch of cars last week that are in bad shape as a show and tell, I don't know if anybody took advantage of going out and riding them.
I don't believe so.
I mean, it's forecasted out for the next five years, I mean, we take some out now, we're gonna be behind the eight ball more next year and the year after and the year after. I mean, the the fact of the matter is, is that vol- call volume is not decreasing.
Right.
Um they're actually probably understaffed as well, so there's that specter to think about over the course of the next three to five years. It it's just a matter of making sure that your people are have the tools in place that they can do their jobs and cars are critical in terms of a police department.
Um.
If I may, with Mr. Wilcox, he he was speaking to a couple of years ago that we got cut like four or six.
Yeah, I think also, yes.
Two years prior to that, there was a town manager that was under direction to freeze for two years.
Every year.
And we are just, we're not even, we haven't caught up from that and that was five years ago. So this is, we work with, you know, Sergeant Meyer works with Mr. Davenport and and Fleet. Uh these are real numbers, as you see, like our cars, as they get cycled down, they become off offline, not being used every day as the as the manager stated. But they become school cars, they become extra job officers, uh extra job uh cars, and then other cars get moved to town departments. You see, the like the courier has my old car from ten years ago and he's driving and and that's a new car for him. Uh it will become, you know, comes down to zoning and engineering, so the cars, with us, our cars just don't go to the to the to the yard. They don't go to the graveyard, they actually get cycled down and are used by other town departments. Um another thing I think I brought up in the the last meeting that we had together, something that we didn't realize until then. Uh when our cars are in crashes, if they get totaled, we lost that car. So the insurance, at full or not, the insurance makes a payout, it goes to a general fund, we don't see that money and we don't, we don't, we don't place that car immediately. That car would go hopefully to the next CIP to try to maintain that. Um so we we don't see that money, so it we may ask for ten cars, but if we have two or three cars that are 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 crashed or are and are totaled. Really next year, we're gonna be asking for thirteen.
Uh so the ten is is, I I believe the manager said we originally asked asked for twelve or eleven, and I think we settled on ten with Mr. Wilcox, Mr. Davenport.
Um and these are, this is their office, uh and these cars are used, uh we have a new uh car wash in town, you see the people, they the officers take pride in it. They're they're running out of their cars to the car wash, um it's important, it it really is important for us. And that's, if I'm, if you have any specific questions I can ask, but that was my my plea for the CIP and cruisers.
Okay, Councilor Manjean.
Thank you, thank you. I would not uh agree to reduce the number that the chief is asking for, primarily because we want our officers to be safe. I would really hate to hear say situation where one of our officers was in a chase or pursued or in a dangerous situation and the car failed. Or or the car did not perform to the officer's expectations. And I think that, you know, we've got body cameras for our officers, you've got the uh will approve best, the the car is a tool, a necessary tool that they need to do their job and protect us. And right now with the heightened craziness in the world, uh we need to give our officers all the tools that are available. And and I I see cars as one of those tools, but yeah, we need to look at a plan to keep rotating every year, put some money in and get them um the number of cars that are required. So I I wouldn't, I wouldn't touch that. Thank you.
Well, we in, uh I'm just gonna put it out to a vote, we in favor of ten vehicles, if you are, raise your hand, I'm good with it. Against?
I'd be good with six, I'm not against six in the mall.
Yeah, I'm not against that, just six.
I think six is good.
I think six is good.
You're against ten. You're not favorite ten, you're against ten.
We're not giving, I'm not never against that, we're trying to save a little money here, because just like every budget, you you know, the hard part, and again, I appreciate your speech, and I'm not again, but
So what's the six, what's the six for?
municipal budgeting, every year we are playing catch up, because there's the real world out there, that folks can only afford certain things, and it's, everything is important here. The hard part is nothing's not important and again, yeah, I'm sorry, we have banks that are failing and the government just letting enrolling them into other banks. Stuff's going on where people, the the value of money is going down and we're will, I'm willing to give six, cuz I know it's important. Just saying, I I don't think we can afford ten every year, I wish we could, I'm sorry, there's there's a there's an affordability aspect of what we're doing here, and that's all I'm saying, and I respect your speech. Don't disagree with you at all, I wanna give you six, I know, I mean, five, seven, whatever the number is, but we wanna give you something, but also save three hundred thousand dollars. Again, cuz there's other priorities here that we're not getting to either, so that's all I'm saying, it's not, it's, we have to make tough choices between all projects that are well, that are important, that's all I'm saying.
Councilor, I I agree with that and I understand everyone has to take, you know, a little bit on the chin here.
Yep.
Um just two things, the the number is high, obviously the cost of the car is is not a big reason.
No, I get it, I'm not not arguing at all, yeah.
It's the equipment which makes would elevates it, and then I think Mr. Nunes could could speak to the maintenance of it. And and this goes back to, I think it was Derek Kennedy several years ago, uh he actually did the cost analysis of the maintenance of an older car and when it would go to auction, so if we can get rid of a car under a hundred thousand, we don't have those major um catastrophic things that that Councilman Genius talking about, we get rid of the car, so we're we're basically just doing tires, brakes and oil and filters. And then we get rid of the vehicle, we actually get some money back. If we hold on to the older cars, which is fine, and and we are doing it, uh that gives a lot of stress on Fleet and they do a phenomenal job. Mr. Davenport and his staff do a phenomenal job, but there is a cost that's increasing in the maintenance section.
Yep, I get it. Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
Councilor Nelson.
Um what is your highest um shift as far as uh officers on the street, patrolmen?
Probably day shift.
And how many officers are on the street patrolling?
Uh detectives and traffic and CPO and SROs and extra jobs.
No, just patrolmen who are in the cruisers, detectives are in private cars.
Um well, you have patrol.
Yep.
You may have three or four traffic officers, marked cars, uh CPO one or two, CPO and four SROs.
Yep. Yep. Right.
And then the shift minimum seven, I didn't do the math.
Okay, so so you're about, you're about twenty officers.
About twenty vehicles are on, marked vehicles are on the road.
Okay, so last year you funded fourteen, this year we fund six, every officer on the busiest shift is in a brand new cruiser. The cruisers that go home with the officers and sit in the garage all night, they don't have to be brand new cruisers, the brand new cruisers should be on the road for patrol. And you know, I've always had a problem with that, other than crest officers who are um called at a moment's notice at two o'clock in the morning, they should have a vehicle to take home. And this is the result of officers taking vehicles home, is a lot of these cars aren't sitting at the PD, they're sitting in their driveways or in their garages. So from last year to this year, we're gonna have twenty cars on the road, less than a year old. And that gives every single patrolman and officer and CPO a new car. So you have fifty new cruisers you wanna have in that fleet, and we don't have fifty cruisers on the road at one time. And the shift changed, they bring the car in, the next guy gets in it and it goes out again. So that's, you you know, I am a thousand percent with you Deputy Mayor, that we have to keep turning these vehicles over, I I I'm there. I created this years ago because we didn't replace the cruisers, but to do ten cruisers every, you know, year at a five year turnover. Fifty cruisers don't have to be brand new, the detectives can be using a cruiser that comes off the road or they use a vehicle that was seized. And and that's why I just have a problem with ten vehicles. If we do six every year for a ten year rotation, it's the same thing, it's less, it's more, more cars. And it's less money every year that we have to hit. That that's why.
Councilor, we gotta save some money off this budget, we gotta get some money saved.
We have twenty officers on the road, twenty officers will be in brand new cruisers, less than a year old.
So what you're proposing right now is six?
Six cars.
Four, it's four fifty.
So it would be four hundred fifty to four hundred fifty thousand, okay?
Four fifty.
I'm not, I'm not myself, I'm not in agreement with it, I do respect everybody's opinion and and what was stated. I still think that uh overall uh us funding and having the proper number of vehicles on a rotating basis is key. I do understand what you're saying about replacing six, everybody's gonna have a vehicle, you know, a year or so uh to be driving, I I I get that. So we don't have the votes for for ten. We in agreement to six.
Yep, we're in agreement.
Okay, six.
What was that number, four fifty?
Six, four fifty.
Four fifty, I sense.
Alright, next. Uh dump truck hot patch, three hundred thousand.
Yep.
We in agreement to that?
I need it, I need it.
Just um that's, yeah, that's, this is for.
Patching asphalt.
This is a dedicated patch truck that has a heater onboard, uh so right now, if we wanna, if we send the guys out with two ton or a ton of patch, we have to buy two tons or two and a half tons of patch to keep the first ton warm enough, because it's, we're not dumping it all, we're not dumping it all in one such like area. So we we wind, then we just then we throw the rest out and that's why we keep, this has a dedicated, it says it's an gearbox on it, all the stuff is right there, tanks, everything else for the whole shit.
What's the the shelf life of of being all of this type?
It should be in the fifteen year range.
Fifteen, okay, alright, thank you.
Donald, does this replace the other hot patch or is it an improvement from the other hot patch we had?
Yeah, the the other, that other truck we had was was converted to a hot, it wasn't, it wasn't a dedicated, it was just.
Oh, right, 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 okay, yep, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, we four?
Yep.
I'm good. Uh next is the side boat refuge truck for four hundred forty eight thousand eight hundred seventy seven dollars.
We just did a bid waiver because they found the body and we had a truck, so we just put a brand new one on for, I don't even know if we have it yet.
No, this is, this, the one that's requested here, there was two originally, cuz it's part of the of the RP, this replaces a two thousand thirteen um auto car. So a ten, it's a ten year old in a life cycle, the lifespan of a uh refuge truck, a side load refuge truck is ten years.
Councilor Manjean.
I thought supporting four hundred fifty thousand dollars for a truck in this budget, it's way too much, plain and simple.
Um we just bought one, so I I I think we can stretch it.
That's outrageous, for this budget, no.
Well, there, that's the price of them, but I say we wait.
No, we don't, we're cutting here, we're cutting there, we're looking at this.
You're not wrong.
I'm I'm being very serious.
Well, you see, here the mayor, can I just ask Donald, so what does that do to our fleet and if in fact one of them goes down, are we gonna have a delay in service?
Yes.
Just so the town council will know to anticipate phone calls.
It's just overtime, it's overtime and delayed.
Alright, keep it in.
Well, you 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 have backup trucks and and the two minutes don't go all of the time.
She asked if there was more than we have, if a handful of trucks.
I'm saying, you have you have trucks that are in the back that are sitting there.
Okay, so, alright, we we did fund the side arm not too long ago.
Yeah, we did a bid waiver on it, I think that was, he don't even have it in the fleet yet.
We did a bid waiver on it. Okay, so, alright, so we're at agreement to remove.
Yep.
Okay, alright, next, engineering transit connect.
This replaces a two thousand five uh Dan, Dan Bigdigni mobile.
A Dan mobile.
I don't get it.
I think he drove this when he had all the back, he had all, he was all tricked out with his um.
What is this?
It's a pickup truck with a cap on it.
It's just a regular pickup truck?
No, it's an SUV.
Oh, an SUV.
Six eighty eight is a, yeah.
Can I ask you? Yeah.
So this is, it's an eight, we're, it's an eighteen year old vehicle already.
Alright, uh Council, Deputy Mayor Scott.
So I, I guess a question would be, when these vehicles, and can I go back to you Jeff? Um these vehicles that we're replacing, they're all gonna be SUVs, right?
Credit Ford does make a a Sedan.
Yeah, so are there SUVs that are gonna come off the fleet offline eventually that we can reuse for stuff like this? Um there's just not one right now?
Yeah, it's all, it all depends on the usage and how bad they're being though.
Do you anticipate?
This is used, this is used for engineering to have all, this is primarily um with the van, the one below it would be primarily JP's, cuz we have all the survey and equipment, that's what we use. That's what we haul around in that vehicle, and the other one is for John for that, so we can, again, the the current vehicle we have for JP right now is a hand-me-down from the police department, as is, and that
Yeah.
was getting pulled off, the other uh smaller SUV was pulled off the road just for unsafe conditions, so we've been through two of them within the last three years for engineering.
Right, and and I'm, I don't want somebody to be driving around a vehicle that's not safe, that's that's absolutely not acceptable. What I'm saying is, is there another fleet car or is there something that's gonna come offline from the EPD that might be able to go down instead of going out to auction?
So the vehicle replacement was is exactly that, so we had ten, ten cars, some would have gone to the graveyard, but a good amount of them would have went to town, to fleet.
Yep. Fleet, yeah.
Going down to six, so we're we're gonna hold on to four cars that are, so only six will transfer over, so that's, it it's it's very much a ripple effect.
Oh, and yes.
It's throwing the the pebble in and then the rains start and, you know, us not getting vehicles affects a lot of other people.
Mm-hmm. No, I agree, right, and that's a really good point, and so I'm glad I asked that question, so if we fund another one for you, that might be one that comes down that we don't need to fund for thirty six because that's gonna be an SUV that theoretically, not absolutely, theoretically could be used as a a car for somebody else, I mean, then at this point, I would say leave it in, that's what we're doing.
Cuz we're still replacing six vehicles with the PD that can get handed down.
Yep. Theoretically, though, I mean, but if they gotta pick their own, they gotta pick their six worst, my guess is, those, those six worst are probably not no SUVs
So. Possibly.
Cruisers, their contracts. Cuz the SUVs are the newer ones.
No, we have an SUV that's a hundred thirty four thousand miles on it.
Which for a police car is a lot, but for the average person who's not racing around in it, it's not, so.
Yeah.
I agree.
Alright, so let's not bela- belabor the point and let's put this up, uh we want this removed, or Captain, let's let's go.
I wanna remove it.
Remove, remove, raise your hand. Okay, remove. And the next one, this would be a van. We're gonna remove this one also. Okay.
What is this a van for?
We good with engineering?
This here?
Engineering.
Then we're gonna be the transit connect van, so it's gonna replace the Explorer and the passenger van out here for engineering, so it's two of the same vehicles.
The the seven oh six, the van, the full size eight passenger, ten passenger van that uh engineering is using now is a two thousand six. And the and six eighty eight, which is the SUV is two thousand five.
We've been to remove.
Yep, yep.
Are these things, oh, I'm sorry, can I ask a question?
Go ahead, yes.
So are these things then, since the consensus, now that I'm in agreement with the consensus, take this out of the budget, are these things that you guys will definitely keep on your radar to be able to go out, you know how you're able to go and find things for auction or FBI has stuff that you'll be able to go? This stuff that'll kind of be on your high priority list to see if there's an SUV or some random white van that you can get your hands on? And then you can come back to us and. And then you can come back to us and.
Sure, and if police wants to donate a brand-new Ford, if you want.
Yeah, and then you can come back to us and ask for that?
Yes.
You can come back, yes, okay. Alright, next, uh EPD sidearm optics holsters, sixty-eight thousand.
That was in the CIP, I would say.
Yeah, I'm good.
We're good with that, and the other one, EPD Joint Operations Center?
Yep.
Hundred eighty-five thousand.
Yes.
We good with that?
Yep.
Alright, going to the last page. EPD dispatch, uh excuse me, dispatch system.
Yep.
Seven hundred seventy-eight thousand one hundred fifty-one dollars.
Just curious, can you update on that project?
This is the last. Is this, would this finalize the the? Yes, sir.
Right?
And it's not just EPD, this is TFS Fire, DPDW, it's actually the end of the whole town.
Right, yep.
This is the whole of the whole.
This is the last one.
So, so after this, then I think what Deputy Mayor said is there, there's gotta be right communication upgrades on a yearly basis. So what's the plan, now that we spent close to two million dollars, what's the plan to make sure that we stay? I don't want the word updated, maybe lack better term?
I don't have that answer, I can get it for you, I'm sure there is a commitment, it is.
Right, because I think we're all committed to this, but I think we don't know how we do this going forward, so we don't fall two million behind on an upgrade in a few years, so I I agree, I just.
Yeah, it is technology, it's.
Yeah, no, I agree, yep, thank you.
So yeah, there looks, there sounds like there should be a contribution annually.
Yeah, yeah. Yep.
Okay, next, the Shaker Pines spillway, seventy-five thousand.
Nope.
Nope.
Sorry, I can't support.
And my problem with this is Adam and Stanley offered to pay it if they dropped the appeal, they already lost in court. So all he said is you lost, drop the appeal and I'll pay it, and they wanna go for it.
So this is a voted resolution, so if this is something.
I didn't vote for it then, I'm not voting for it now.
Did we use ARPA funds?
From a process, you already did, so we put seventy-five from ARPA and then you made a commitment to them last fall for an additional seventy-five that would be funded through CIP, that was voted on as a resolution, so I would.
We said we would look at it.
Right, now you gotta read it, I'm gonna lose it.
We did not say we would fund it.
Yeah, no.
Right.
I I'm just saying that there is a dual piece here if you're gonna undo this.
There's not an undoing anything, sorry, I was.
Deputy Counselor Desper.
This this should have no bearing on any sort of, wouldn't Stanley, any litigation happening, that should be no part of this. This is something we decided to do because it affects the town, a great part of the town, and we made a commitment to do it, and we have to keep that commitment to do it as in in my opinion, so.
Okay.
So I wanna be clear, the commitment was not the fun, it was to look at it in the budget, you can go back and redo resolution. It's it's a, so again, the the commitment was the ARPA money at that point, then the relook at the budget, so there's no, hey, we're gonna allocate seventy-five thousand, that was not part of the resolution, go back and look at it. Um I'm sorry, I'm against this, and if there's no one, you don't need to re-do any resolution, if you're for it, you're for it, that's fine. But there's no undoing any resolution, because we did not pass any part of that resolution.
Well, I I'm I'm in favor of it, we we did make a commitment um to take the other half of the seventy-five thousand dollars within
Right.
within the budget, does affect the whole the whole town.
Right.
So I myself uh I'm in favor of it. So we 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 can, we can vote, I'm I'm in favor. Who's in favor, one, two, three?
Yeah, it's something I know that I I uh I I believe there's enough support for it, or there's I kinda, you know, the the fact that we're taking hand votes, it's it it it's kind of like, I get it, like for what we're doing, but it's not like set in stone, there's people not here.
We should be.
Right, I mean, this is gonna, it, right, but this is also, it's gonna end up being amendment on the floor.
Right, right, exactly, so.
So I I mean, I I get it, we understand you're not for it, I think there's enough support for it,
We understand that, but I think that we would have enough for it.
where if we just say keep it in now, it's cleaner and then we don't have the mess of the amendment from the floor.
Right.
I want the mess from the amendment on the floor, because we're taking out a generator, we're taking out police cruisers.
That is.
No.
I'm taking it for mill rate on the resolution.
Right, exactly, right.
And you give us some private private identity, sixty-seven five thousand dollars.
Okay, excuse me, mayor?
It will do a change, it's gonna change the mill rate, we do these amendment on the floor and it's gonna.
Can all the presidents go swim at Shaker Pines Lake?
No.
No, can't, can't take my kids fishing.
It's a private association.
I I get that, I I understand that, it's like.
So I'm I'm just going to, I'm just going to suggest that everybody can get what they want,
That's what we know for, I'm a now.
but to make it easier from an administrative standpoint on Monday night, that it be left in, right, John? And if they delete, if they um vote.
I just want an agreement on, well, I don't want it to be left that that it could change on Monday night. Because if we put it up on here and then there's a change in the vote, well, I'm gonna be calculating a new mill rate based on what we do tonight. And I'm gonna put that into a mill rate resolution, and then when when you, if it changes on Monday night, I'm not, you know, then I'm gonna, then there's gonna be a scramble, we're gonna have to change that mill rate resolution, I'm gonna have to calculate it in the middle of the meeting, and it's just it's just gonna, it's gonna create a lot of hassle and you know, a lot of opportunity for error and, you know, things like that.
That's a great point, and you can bring it up to the council members that aren't here tonight, because we're all here and our voices matter, sitting here. So um you know, he's speaking for two council members that aren't currently sitting here, and we made our point very clear at the council meeting when this was passed, I would think they would have seen, at least one of them would have seen the priority to be here tonight.
I'm not sure what the, I'm sorry, um I'm not sure what the, what the technical protocol is here, I don't know, does the same, is it like,
Go ahead, Counselor, I'm sorry.
does it take six votes to remove this off, because there's not six votes to remove it, right here in this room right now. So I don't know what the technical thing is here in terms of how, when it stays or goes.
Deputy Mayor Scott.
So what we do here, it is, hey, this is our first run, this is our first crack at it, this is what we're going to theoretically agree on. This can also change because we have two more nights of deliberations.
Right.
And or, and we all have seen it happen, those friendly amendments from the floor, I'm just hoping between now and Thursday evening,
Right.
we come to an absolute consensus on what's gonna happen in the end.
Right.
Listen, to be honest, is this my favorite use of seventy-five thousand dollars? Probably not. But it's something that we, as a council, love it or hate it, decided that we were going to, in public, say we were going to do.
No, no, we didn't.
We're going, let me finish, we said that we were gonna fund half now and half in the budget, we would look at it, whatever in the budget,
No, we do.
but whether you say we're gonna look at it during budget, fund it in the budget, or hopefully fund it in the budget, really, you know, the public here is the same thing, they're gonna hear it being funded in the budget. So is it my favorite use of seventy-five thousand dollars? No. Is it what I'm going to be in favor of because we made a commitment six months ago to do it? Yes. Um so it is what it is, maybe we just leave it as a table and then move on, I don't know.
Well, the entire night we've been running consensus, it hasn't been six, it hasn't been five, we've been yes or no.
Yep.
Majority wins, majority tonight, I have a feeling, is saying no. If it wants to be revisited along with EMS generators and other things, we can revisit it. But as of tonight, the sitting members who took the time out of their day to come to the meeting, I think are saying no.
Can I, can I just say something, yeah, then, absolutely, yep, that's fine, if we wanna take it off now and to revisit it on Wednesday or Thursday, that's fine, I just think it's silly, because it's gonna go back on there.
We're 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 gonna, we're gonna revisit it when everybody's here, you we're gonna have a majority to say that it's gonna be on there, so
Yep.
you know, it's, you know, matters of antipathy, so.
Yeah, it's fine, yes, right, right.
It is what it is, so, you know, we have Wednesday and Thursday, and I will tell you right now that it will change, so.
Yeah.
Alright, EMS AEDs, absolutely, and that's, I'm good with that, everybody good with?
These are your AEDs in all town buildings, yes.
Aaron, sorry, what's AED, AED just for?
Automatic external defibrillator.
Thank you.
What's the light?
Okay, excuse me, everyone, order, thank you, appreciate that, Deputy Mayor Scott.
So my question, I know we talked about this briefly, I believe, in general government, is there a maintenance um cost or use? I know that you have to go out and kind of test them and they can have a shelf life, and let's pray to God that they are disposed of and never being used, because that would be wonderful, but there's some sort of nominal shelf life or nominal maintenance fee, right? And you guys can do that in-house?
We do it in-house, we replace the batteries every four years and replace the pads every two years and we budget that.
Okay. Uh this seven to ten years shelf life, some of yours are probably creeping up on twenty years, honestly. Okay.
Um we can continue to support them if that's what you wanna do, but we probably should.
This one is to replace.
This is to replace, yes, all new.
Yeah.
The other one? Yeah, so absolutely.
Alright. Well, everything we've got to control, that'll be, those are a couple for revisit, but overall. Overall, we can't get much bigger, overall.
So we might have some closing comments.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
Just.
No, I didn't know, I didn't know if we were done yet.
No, we're not, just for a couple minutes and then you guys can.
Okay, sorry, his fault.
Thank you, alright, we're gonna go Deputy Mayor Scott and then we're gonna go to Town Manager, uh Ellen.
And I'm sure you guys are gonna do this, but for, are we doing this?
Water pollution control?
Oh, no, probably not.
Yes.
Um so I guess for Wednesday slash Thursday, if we can start from the cuts that we made here, so we can see that working number, and then the cuts you guys made on the operational side? Yes, can we do, can we start there? Yeah, on.
Yes.
True, the everything that we've talked about tonight is is been in, is in here.
Okay. So is the box to the right, the council adjustments, what we've done tonight?
That's it.
I can't read it.
Okay, so proposed was thirty-one point sixty-seven mill rate coming into tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You adjusted, what you adjusted amounted to a mill rate reduction of point six five, so it is now standing at thirty-one point zero two based on the work that you've done tonight, which would give us a mill rate increase of three point one three, still.
And is that with the?
Let's keep funding.
Is that there?
We're getting there. So John, what is the dollar amount of the CIP right now?
Right, see. Pass we have.
Give me one second here.
That doesn't take on four to bed though.
Right, that's not board of ed, that's not, right, that's just CIP. This is just CIP.
Right, I'm just, no, I just said that to Kenny, yeah. I just said that to Kenny, it's not worth it.
One Wednesday night, we will.
What time is it Wednesday night?
Seven o'clock?
By thirty?
Start at five thirty.
Start at five thirty?
By thirty.
And Thursday?
One million?
Thursday?
We have not done anything for Thursday yet, we hadn't done as a tentative, so tell us.
On Thursday, okay, okay.
Right, so hoping that we come to a place of like, we shouldn't bring it up Wednesday night.
Okay, so the WPC, I see there, there's a couple of things that we have to.
Yeah, we're gonna hopefully come back to that once he does this, just so you guys have a little bit of.
That's fine, you, I mean, you can, you can do this for Wednesday.
Are we doing WPC?
Yeah.
So um. CIP would be five million two twenty-nine ninety-six.
Five million two twenty-nine, five million two twenty-nine eighty-six.
Two twenty-nine nine eighty-six.
Nine eighty-six, there's still two hundred fifty thousand.
Two two nine.
Actually.
I'm sorry, I'm being dumb.
Right.
Well, there's still.
How would that change, would that change that number at all?
Number seven, I missed the last.
That's three point one three.
Five two two nine ninety-six.
Thank you.
That's from tonight.
Okay, right.
And that's including.
And they're down close to a five million.
They're close, yeah. Okay, alright, so we're only two twenty-nine on?
We're missing a million.
So why don't, okay, does this need a couple clue what you just said about insured up?
No, it doesn't, it's just. Those are all just just.
Yeah, Donald, we're all worried about the, the areas here.
So they are insured, okay, wait, I stand corrected, we're we're already plugged them in, so they are here.
So, yeah, right here on the top line, zero medical increase, medical, same thing up here for the board of ed, that's the two fifty, and then this is ours, so those are in there.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
So that's plugged into that five million number you just gave us?
The, that's the.
No, no, that's five million. That five million, we were twenty-nine is only CIP right there. Okay, that's all I wanted to know, but it is plugged into the mill rate, the number that we saw.
Yeah, which plug into the.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Set and shown, alright.
So, you know, I'm.
What's that, in the, in the insurance, or?
I understand.
Or most of the.
For. To get.
Those are.
So this is what, right, so we're trying, and we're gonna take it, and for the.
Yeah, that'd be hundred we took now.
Yep.
We're starting with this.
Because it's on this line. So.
I know, let me.
Can we go to it?
Okay, alright, we're gonna, we're gonna move forward with the uh water pollution control.
Let's go.
Alright, first of all, the. Okay, just don't worry, Donald. C mom on the program? Forgot to put the shade on. Donald.
So CMOM stands for capacity management, operations, maintenance. So the state has um again, another mandate that we respond, that we have, we need certain metrics um for again, for again, evaluating, how many miles of sewer we videotape in a year, how many do we clean? Tree uh like maintenance of trunk lines, stuff like that, there is a whole scorecard that does that, and this is the beginning part of that where we can, we try to cooperate, we try to do the best we can with that CMOM, and capacity management, operations and maintenance of our sewer system, from collections, which is everything in the street, to the plant itself.
Okay, thank you, go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
And just as a preface to everybody, this is not mill rate related, this, these pages, because it's WPCI.
This is sewer fee related.
Yep, this is sewer fee.
Sewer fee.
Okay.
Okay, we good with this?
This is not including the ARPA money, correct?
I get so confused about that.
No, this is not including the ARPA.
That's about three million is separate, that's the actual project.
So this is in, I wanna make sure it be clear, this is in our CIP, even though we're showing it's water pollution control, doesn't, does this go to the sewer fee?
It's separate from, it it is, I have a separate CIP fund that is um funded by water pollution control and of itself, so it is all, this is all funded through, it's the Clean Water Fund um was trying to get us to be self efficient with the water pollution control facility.
So, so it's proposed fee increase for sewer, if we cut it, does that cover this cost?
Uh yes, it the, that would go towards that fee, yes, so if you cut something like this, we could potentially reduce the the sewer use fee.
So, uh I'll make sure, so in the past, we just cut the fee, so you're saying now we have to cut something out of this budget to reduce the fee? Is that what you're saying? So if we didn't wanna give, just throw it out, say we didn't wanna give the six-dollar maintenance increase, then we decide that.
Well, yeah, the this.
Because that's a separate vote, that won't be on Monday, that's a separate vote.
Right.
Right?
Oh, yeah, I'm not.
Yes.
That's usually the first meeting in June, right, I think?
Right, it it just has to be because of the the regulation of where we set the, where we adopted the sewer fee,
Yeah.
it has to be done sometime prior to June, first, July first.
Right, so so.
Yeah, so that's what we do it.
Just wanna be clear, if, so if we wanna, we don't wanna pass on the full fee on the sewer, do we need to cut it here or do we just cut the fee?
Well, you can cut the fee.
Right.
But you will then, and will not have revenue to cover your expenses. If you don't cut the expenses, um and you will use some of the fund balance.
Right, that's what, I think that's what I need to understand here, what, I know the fund balance, just, I need to understand all that. We need more detail on this before June, what the fund balance is, what our collection rate is, I know we're also going after folks who haven't paid over a number of years, there's a lot of moving parts with this fund that I think people need to understand. It's mine, sorry, it's mine, I'm not against these projects, but I need to understand the whole picture.
Okay, we. First one's a mandated, okay, the next one is the vegetation management collection system.
That's nothing for the shade.
Yes, it is. It is.
Collection system.
Oh, that's collection system and vegetation.
Well, collection system in advance of roads work.
So when we've got all the roads projects going on, if they need sewer. So when we've got all the roads projects going on, if they need sewer work, we need fund, we need a fund to enable us to do that work.
Alright, because the road works.
So, so that we don't have to cut into the, into the pavement, at least not the town has to cut into the pavement after we just put down new pavement.
Okay, we good with that? Right.
So is this regular CIP? No, this is.
Sewer.
Sewer.
So by us moving these forward, we're increasing the sewer fee. I was out of the room when Mike, I think Mike.
These, right, these projects were built into the WPC budget, okay, so the total down here on the, on the, the very bottom, the three million two hundred and seven thousand dollars, um, that number you'll see as a transfer to, uh, CIP or transfer to.
Capital transfers, I think it is in the, the name of it, so if you look in the WPC fund.
Mm-hmm.
On, uh, grab the right font. At the end of the expenditure looping, there's a line item for. Okay. On page seventy five, transferred to capital, okay, so that number is three, three million two hundred and seven thousand dollars. This is the detail that makes up that number, okay, we put that into a separate CIP fund that's works the same way as the one that, uh, that the capital from the general fund goes, so this number here ties into the transfer to capital that's on the general fund, this number comes from WPC, they're kept separate, um, just so we can track them separately, and these projects are all funded, so that, that CIP fund is funded a hundred percent by the, um, by the Water Pollution Control Facility.
Right, so if we were to approve every one of these water pollution control fees, user fees are gonna go through the roof.
No, then the, they will increase by the amount that we already requested.
Right, because I think, right, the proposed was over seven point six million dollars, and now, so the department proposed was seven point six, now it's down to three point two, so are you saying that, right, so is the number that was on your slideshow, is that, what's that in relation?
That's based on the proposed.
The, so that's based on the three point two.
Yes.
So that concludes all these projects.
Yes.
Thank you, you are.
Yes, right?
Okay.
Yes.
That's what you're.
So everything that we would remove from this would lower their proposed number.
Lower that sewer fee increase.
The, right, their proposed number.
Yes. Yes, on that.
Yes, I'm getting it up.
Yeah.
Let me see, I have.
I can't see that.
I won't be able to calculate that number.
No, Gina knows how to talk to me like I'm in second grade.
And so do we have money already put aside for all these projects?
It worked, I'm not knocking it.
Yes, that's what we funded in prior year.
So, alright, so this is what we have funded in prior years.
It's right here.
Okay, I'm looking, I'm, okay, I just ran right by that one Kenny.
So, 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 alright, so if I look at pump station upgrades, if we had five hundred thousand twenty four, that would make it a million dollars, we have in that fund? If I, if I.
Uh, I'm not sure what, but what we have in there actually right now, but that pump station upgrade fund is, we've got, how many, seventeen, sixteen?
Sixteen, yeah.
Pump stations, and a lot of them, if not all of them, need to be rebuilt, um, there's a lot of money, now Sparkle Street is, um, over two million dollars, that's gonna be in the, um, in the, um, ARPA fund, right, and we're gonna fund another amount in twenty four to finish that, the funding for that fee. Uh, Great Brook is gonna be, is gonna be more than the amount we've set aside in ARPA.
Yeah.
The excess is coming out of, like, this fund, or, you know, there's a little bit of money left over. When we did the WPC facility upgrade, there was some money in there for pump stations, so there's, there's some money that's, that, that, there's really only like, it's like a million dollars or something like that, I gotta go do all the finalization of it, but.
So, my, my take on this is, one, I, I really don't know the priority of these projects, so I know that I am not in favor of raising the base rate one cent, because the elderly who don't use it, it's like the electric company charging a meter fee just to have it on your house, it's unacceptable, and I'm okay increasing the sewer usage fee half of what's proposed, so with that half, how much money is that that helps us fund these projects, and I would like a priority from WPC on which projects now they would like to move forward with. That's how I see this, 'cause I don't wanna micromanage, I do understand WPC has been let go for a hundred years since the system was built, but we pretty much rebuilt the whole plant and everything, and I, I just, you know, people are having a hard time absorbing this, so yes, they're gonna take a hit, so am I, but the meter fee for people who don't flush their toilets, it's not right to raise the rates. That's how I would like to approach this.
Counselor, please.
Okay, so, and again, my ignorance, but the sewer relining program infrastructure that's three hundred thousand, how does that differ from the storm sewer relining on the CIP for five hundred?
Because that's storm water, and that's sewage.
Okay, thank you, that's all I needed to know.
Yeah.
Just wanted to say that for us.
This sewer, they should put.
Okay, okay, thank you.
It should be storm.
Okay, so.
I just wanted to share that with you twice.
So, to, to Counselor, Counselor Nelson's point about prioritization, we had a, we had a consultant go inspect all sixteen of our pump stations that come up with a, with a fifteen year plan that prioritize which stations would be going, which stations to do first, having worked with John Wilcox, we came up with this schedule to do that based upon the consultant's recommendation and how to fund it, we're trying to get ahead of it like the South Maple and West Shore, that's not gonna be done till twenty six, but we have to fund them now because we know they're coming up in twenty six. So that's why these priorities are here now, so the ones that have been historically funded like collection system and advance of road work, we're doing all of, again, metal arc area, um, we reline half of that, we have to replace half of it, so that funding to do that is coming out of that area. So we're relining, we do, we just relined the thirty six inch pipe across the South River Street Bridge live, by the way, which was quite a chore. We had to do that for safety reasons during the bridge reconstruction and the like, so that's where that kind of money, we, our sewer relining, that is the first thing that we go to, is sewer relining, a hundred percent. Replacing sewer is, is triple the cost of if you have to dig it up, uh, just because it's not the same as putting in a drain system, it's just, the specs are different, the mechanical are different, the testing is different, so that's where the, that majority comes from, and the trunk line, the major sewer line replacements reserve fund, that is for catastrophic failure of, again, of forced mains and the like, which speaks to the South Maple Street, uh, oh, sorry, the South River Street replacement study pump station, um, we know we have to work on South River Street pump station, but we also have a hundred year old plus cast iron force main that goes from South River Street, uh, traverses the, traverses the, the tracks twice, goes down from the thirty, thirty with twenty one inch pipe back up to thirty to thirty six, keeps meandering, it takes corners, the stability of that is unknown right now, that's why we wanna have, put that money in to figure out if we can use the property on Prospect Street as a pump station, not Prospect, Thompson Court, that we have as a possible new area for a pump station and get rid of the one on the, at the boat launch, so that's what that a hundred fifty thousand is for, and then like John, John alluded to, that other pump station account is for generic, uh, events that we give, these pump stations are not, are not inexpensive to replace, so the, the engineering alone is astronomical just because of, of that, and, and never mind replacement costs, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Also, I have, um, the capital restriction of point zero 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 two of the, of the grant list, that's the amount that I can fund in any fiscal year, so we have to fund these things because they're, they're, these are projects are over two million dollars, most of them. So I need to fund them over multiple years in order to accumulate the funds, and, and once again, we have to use, begin, I, I can only do it over three years, so if I'm close on the, on the three years for a specific pump station, I go to the, the, um, the general one to get the balance of it, so we can pay for it and do the whole thing, otherwise we could go to referendum for it.
Okay, thank you, John, Deputy Mayor.
So on this list, right, we have these lists, which it sounds like it's basically priority one, um, where is the ARPA money that we put into this fund, like, what, is it going to any of these projects, is it going to different projects that are just not listed here?
They're different projects that aren't listed, so what's in ARPA is Great Brook and Sparkle Street.
Okay, hang on, ARPA is Great Brook?
Great, great.
Great. And Sparkle?
Sparkle, yeah.
And that takes care of our, um, ARPA money?
Yes.
So that's ARPA funded, alright, thank you. I mean, again, while I still have the floor, I guess, if you look, I mean, nobody wants to raise these rates, but I think part of the problem is that we've given so many, I, I think years ago, we started cutting rates for every group of different people, different kinds of groups of people, and we were underfunded, and now we're still playing catch up, and now we have infrastructure that we still have to replace, if you look at it, it's mapped out for the next five years, so whatever cuts we make this year, just keep in mind, we're gonna, again, we're gonna be behind the eight ball these next couple of years, so I know nobody wants to do it, but even next year, and actually every year is funded at higher than this year, so the more you take out this year, the more it's gonna be funded the next couple of years, and we don't have ARPA anymore after that.
Gina, I understand a hundred percent, and I agree with what you're saying, but when you have a person who doesn't flush their toilet because they don't wanna spend the money, um, on the water and the sewer fee, charging them just to be connected is wrong. How do they save money? They can't save money that way, so if we're gonna do something, it needs to go to the user.
And I, I don't have, I don't have a problem necessarily, you know, either not having that increase of six dollars or bringing that down and having the usage fee, the usage charge is where we, the increase, I, I think that makes more sense, I understand it. Um, in the end, you know, we're probably talking about twenty to twenty five dollars annually per, for the for the, um, base rate, but it, I get what you're saying, I, there just has to be some sort of happy medium, where do we find it? I, I don't know, I, I just, I don't wanna not, because they need to be able to flush their toilet, once they decide they need to, they need to be able to.
I know our pump stations are bad, I know they are, I mean, look at Wayman's Road, we fought that fight, and that's nowhere on any of these.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be here someday, so I understand that, but I just cannot raise a base rate for somebody who is trying to be thrifty, and twenty five dollars is twenty five dollars when it comes to, you know, buying a dozen eggs and a gallon of milk.
What would we need to cut to not do the six dollar increase, was that gonna be your question?
My question was just gonna be, can we change it to the usage?
Well, you just eliminate, you eliminate the base and raise it.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Right, but that's gonna be a much higher usage rate then.
This is the reason why, I just wanna say, I, this is the reason why I wanna spend a lot more ARPA on our sewers, I don't think we spent enough on that, because it's just, this, it's a ridiculous fee, and I, I, I understand it's, it's necessary, but we've gotta get that house in order, we have to form a whole, a whole commission, still, I think that's something we still need to do. Um, I, I think it should be a separate thing, but, um, I, I would be in favor of, of putting it towards the usage, um, and not raising, uh, that, that fee.
The base.
Yeah, the base.
What's it, thirty nine, forty five, so it would be six.
This. Six dollar increase, absolute.
We did a much smaller increase per quarter, it's made at like forty, forty two dollars. How much will we have to cut?
So, we want, we want a six dollars.
This is a lot, it's more harder to, to figure out, I don't have that money.
It's usage, so it's not six dollars for everybody usage, it being Gina has a toilet that runs nonstop, she's paying a lot more of that six dollars than the elderly person who's trying to be thr- thrifty.
Right, so I, I guess.
I get, I, I get, I get your shit.
I guess my, what I'm saying is, now it's thirty nine per quarter, the recommendation is forty five, people don't want, don't have a palette for that, I get it, I'm pretty sure that's probably unanimous that people don't have a palette of doing a six increase, a six dollar increase for the base rate, so is there a palette that we all have from thirty nine? Do we have a palette for forty one, or do you have a zero at all, because I think.
I am a zero.
I, I, you are, I mean, you are, I am talking to the rest of the people.
Of course, no, no. V period, the base fee should be zero.
But we still have, right, but then you still have, well, we can't take it away.
And you add it to usage, it's the same thing, but the people who use pay, the people who don't, don't.
It's a pleasure.
It's like, like I said, it's the electric company now instead of us paying for usage, we're paying for delivery. They're getting us one way or another, and that, and the people see us doing the same thing, and I have a hard time raising a base fee just because they're hooked to the sewer, that we forced them to hook to, we didn't, but years ago, we put a lien against their house and it, it's, I, I just, I have a very hard time, even at thirty nine dollars, thirty nine dollars a quarter, four quarters, you know, that's insurance money for them.
Well, then maybe we start the conversation like this, and, and again, their heads may explode, so I apologize. And I'm not saying it's, it's feasible, maybe we start the conversation on, is there enough, i- is there a consensus not to raise the increase, the base rate at all? And if the consensus is by everybody that we're not raising the base increase at all, then we know the level of work we have to do because then you're talking more than a thirty six cent usage fee increase, that's the, that's proposed, it's a thirty six cent. And then, do we couple that with taking out some of this, like, I mean, I don't know.
Well, I, 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 that's why I was, right, alright, and that's why I said, I wanna see if we remove the increase on the base rate
So. I've been talking to sort of everybody.
and we added it to the usage, what would the increase in the usage be, and that would give us a better idea of where we stand
How much does?
before we start making these cuts, because we don't know what the, what the, um, what the result's gonna be by taking the base fee.
Right, and I think John said he can't really do that on the fly.
Right, so maybe we move this to the next meeting, I know WPC needs it, I do, but I can't go after the people who, I, i- if you're really doing your share to cut costs, and us slapping more of a flat fee against you, is, it's just like, eh, who cares? And I can't do it, I won't support it. And, and I, I mean, you guys can vote, I mean, I'm only one person, but.
Yeah, I agree with Kenny.
So, did I hear that you wanna reserve this until Wednesday night, so John can do some calculations, based on what it costs?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so if they're okay with what I'm saying, if they're not, then it doesn't matter.
I think it makes sense to get the information there.
Just get, let's get the information before any decisions are made in regard to this, I, I see what you're saying in terms of, you know, the base rate going from thirty nine to, you know, forty six, six dollars, it's twenty four dollars a year, so.
Plus the usage.
Use, usage fee, plus the usage fee, so what you're saying is, you don't wanna see somebody who's not using their toilet get penalized twenty four dollars a year.
Right, and the restaurant that has water running twenty four hours a day should be absorbing more of the cost. When we switch from the tax base to the user, that was the whole point, was the people.
So, yeah, no, I, I hear what you're saying, John, on, on these figures here going from the usage charges, three sixty, five thirty nine. I think this is.
And this is three, three ninety six to five ninety three, what, it's these two charges here.
Oh, the, the two charges are, there's two different rates, the smaller rate is for up to twenty thousand uh gallons.
It's up to twenty.
Yeah, and then the other is um, over, and it's only on the piece that's gonna fix us.
Okay, so, alright, if, if you can just do the calculation for us.
What I need to do is, I, I had, um, I had our Woodard Currents um spreadsheet, but, but it's now, that information is a little bit dated. So I've gotten the usage for the last three years, um, so I'd like to kind of build my own little model to try and uh, and calculate the.
And you'll be able to do that, you have that first one, Stacy?
I think so, yeah.
Oh, thank, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Sorry, John. No, but I, I, I do understand, does anybody have any final questions for tonight? Uh, it worked.
I think it was a good meeting.
Yeah, it was a good meeting. Alright, do I have a um motion to adjourn, so I'm gonna be able to say about Congressman Nelson, uh, on favor, unanimous, thank you.